And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend Staley. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 23, 2024.
Do we have any corrections or changes? I see none. I will move that we approve the minutes for the regular meeting of July 23, 2024.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. Tonight for proclamations, we have National Health Center Week, Trash-Free ICT Month. In awards, we have a service award and Leadership Wichita 2024.
Councilmember Becky Tuttle is joining me as we proclaim this National Health Center Week. We please ask Hunter Health, Grace Med, and Health Corps to please come forward at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita founded in 1870. Whereas for more than 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative health care in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Community health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, community health centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Every day, community health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services. They provide comprehensive care, allowing each community member to thrive. Health centers have more than doubled their behavioral health workforce in the last decade to meet America's growing need for behavioral health needs. The Community Health Center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving health outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the first week of August 2024 as National Health Center Week, right here in the city of Wichita, encouraging all citizens to take part in this week by visiting their local health center to learn more about the important partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve."
Good evening. On behalf of federally qualified health centers, I want to thank Mayor Lily Wu and the Wichita City Council for this proclamation during National Health Center Week. Since the nation's first community health center was founded in 1965, community health centers have understood that where we live, work, worship, and play impacts our health. With roots in a civil rights movement, the visionaries who founded the earliest health centers believed that we could fight poverty and empower communities with health and opportunity.
Today, community health centers play a vital role in enhancing access to essential primary care nationwide. We increase access to crucial primary care by reducing barriers such as cost, lack of insurance, distance, and language. In Wichita, the federally qualified health centers have been instrumental in serving over 80,000 individuals annually, providing a comprehensive array of services, including primary care, dental, behavioral health, vision, and pharmacy services. Every August, we seek to increase the awareness of the 1,400 community health centers nationwide.
This year, the theme of National Health Center Week is powering communities through caring connections. Community health centers in every state, U.S. territory, and the District of Columbia serve as a beacon of strength, service, and care in our communities by serving all regardless of their ability to pay. As we celebrate our employees, board members, and supporters, we want to extend our heartfelt appreciation to Mayor Lily Wu and Wichita City Council for their recognition and support of the significant contributions made by community health centers in Wichita. Thank you.
Again, thank you to our partners here in our community. Our next proclamation will be for WSU Trash-Free ICT Month. Can you please come forward? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas founded in 1870. Whereas the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, estimates that 80% of plastics pollute our oceans originate from rivers, streams, and other waterways that flow through urban areas. The Environmental Finance Center at Wichita State University, in partnership with the Great Plains Nature Center, the Kansas Alliance for Wetlands and Streams, Backcountry Hunters, Wichita Park and Recreation, will pilot a project that uses an in-stream trash collection device and community volunteers to count and catalog the trash pulled out of Chisholm Creek. Whereas understanding what kind of litter pollutes Wichita streams can inform policies and procedures for proper disposal of trash and ultimately reduce water pollution. And whereas monthly cleanups will help reduce the trash flowing from Chisholm Creek into other waterways and stormwater systems. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2024 as Trash-Free ICT Month in the city of Wichita, and encourage all Wichitaans to sign up to volunteer to help count and catalog litter data."
Thank you to the council and to the mayor and to those that have supported the health and cleanliness of our river system and our urban tributaries for decades now. We're excited to start on a project that's not just cleaning litter out of the river at a big one-time event each April, but to start at the headwaters of the Arkansas River here in our urban areas. Those tributaries, those small creeks that flow in. This project is built off of a program that started in 2021, and so we're building on data that we collected at that point. The purpose, as was mentioned, is to count and catalog the trash that is collected by a floating boom in Chisholm Creek Park that is stretched across one of the waterways there. We would like you to check out our project by going to wichita.edu/trashfreeict. This trap doesn't hurt any of the other critters that you might see in the park there at Great Plains Nature Center, and it is a collaborative effort between the Environmental Finance Center, Great Plains Nature Center, the Kansas Alliance for Wetlands and Streams, and Backcountry Hunters and Anglers. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
May I please ask David Frisching to please come forward at this time? We will ask City Manager Bob Leighton to please present this award. I will read this special service award. David Frisching has worked for the city of Wichita's Water Resource Recovery Division just three months shy of 42 years. Throughout his career, Dave worked as a laborer and equipment operator before being promoted to a plant operator, a position he has held for more than 35 years. During his years of dedicated service, Dave's expertise has been critical to the success of many major water plant upgrades and special projects. Dave's passion and dedication for water quality has resulted in the division's impeccable compliance record for over four decades. Dave, we would like to thank you for your many years of dedicated service, and we wish you the best in your retirement, and I know everyone will greatly miss you. Thank you very much, Dave. May I please ask Leadership Wichita Class of 2024 to please come forward at this time? Councilmember Becky Tuttle is also joining us as one of the trustees of Leadership Wichita, which is part of the Greater Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce. I will read a little bit about Leadership Wichita and then ask one of your members to please tell us a little bit more about this Class of 2024. Leadership Wichita was introduced in 1983 with more than 1,000 local business, community, government, and military leaders graduating from the program with a commitment to becoming strong leaders right here in our community. We would like to congratulate the Class of 2024 for Leadership Wichita.
So I'm Erin Wano. I am the Recruiting Sergeant with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. And one of the things that's pretty cool about all of us is we were selected out of a group of about 200 applicants. We have to be nominated and apply, and then there's a process that we go through, and it's incredible to get to meet all of these amazing people. I may have searched you already, so I apologize. It's what we do. But it's a huge opportunity for us to network with the businesses and really to further the partnership within the city of Wichita, so I'm excited.
For our guests who are here for the awards and proclamation, you may sit and continue being part of our city council meeting. We will have public comment later on regarding the budget, so you may stay and voice your opinion. At this time, it is public agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the first person.
George Theo Harris, MABCD.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Legal. George's agenda: We had a house in the Mead neighborhood where there was a double homicide two years back. Good neighbors were talking about moving. MABCD had been involved for several years at this property. Try as I might, I finally talked the owner to sell and found a buyer willing to rid us of this eyesore. On the morning of the eviction, the 21-year-old buyer asked me to be present. I got there and saw three illegal pit bulls, so I called animal services, and a woman who was a rescue. I also had our VP of Communications walk down, as he has been involved directly. The occupants took their treasures to the front easement. The MABCD inspector told me she was coming over to board up a property on the next street over. I asked her to come explain to the evicted people that they just couldn't go break into another house in the area or leave their things in the easement. She came by, and I'm not sure what she told them. I am aware of what she told us, and at worst, we were complying with our First Amendment rights to peacefully assemble. She told us to leave a city street. Her exact words were, "I never said you shouldn't be there," but clearly stated that all those people shouldn't be there. Yet she did personally tell me to leave. With someone with police powers, meaning if you don't mow your lawn and the city contractors mow it, it's a $250 assessment and $350 the next time in each subsequent mow. Now that is some far-reaching police powers. So when an MABCD employee tells a citizen to do something, I'm pretty sure I was supposed to leave the area. To make matters worse, her boss said I couldn't talk to her anymore. Her boss told us, "Moving forward, I ask that you submit all complaints through MABCD's portal or the city's report and issue, and to advise your association members to do so as well. Please do not email me or staff directly. The MABCD portal in particular is the most efficient way to conduct business," she said. "They have violated our First Amendment rights, and now my neighborhood has been handcuffed further by MABCD. Bravo." I have said good things to this council about this inspector in the past. No more. Later in the budget portion, I won't be asking for money for more inspectors, but maybe for better training. Back to my agenda. The next MOP, Neighborhood Speaker, will explain what we are seeking, call it an agenda of sorts. With agendas such as mine, Wichita neighborhoods would be much nicer and appealing to live in. One last item: We weren't getting resolutions on neighborhood complaints that we needed from the community policing section of our patrol east. The CP officer kept telling us he did what his bosses told him to do. After years, I finally realized I should contact his bosses, which I did, to include the mayor, and lo and behold, the heavens opened up and dropped Lieutenant Larry Carlson to our doorstep. Talk about helping us would be an understatement. He has been a complete blessing. I'm guessing Chief Sullivan told him to shut Theo up, and I'm definitely shut up on the police end of the equation. Now if this council can help me get the MABCD piece working with us, we might have neighborhoods worth feeling good about. Heck, one more shout-out to our new forestry supervisor, John Bacon, for his timely actions on dropped branches. Now these are agendas. And by the way, Gary who? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next individual.
Alan Eddington, new neighborhood position with MABCD.
Hello all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alan Eddington. I've accepted the role of MOP, Maintain Our Properties, for the Grandview Heights Neighborhood Association. I've lived in Grandview Heights for over 20 years. In this time, I have seen our neighborhood spiral out of control. As the MOP, I aim to mop up the violations and avoid being out of compliance like surrounding neighborhoods. I need the help of MABCD, namely to work directly with them to accomplish this. Recently, Kalen Nethercot attended our Neighborhood Association meeting and encouraged us to report violations through the report and issue on the wichita.gov website. I went home to report six violations. Within a matter of days, I received emails that the violations had been closed without any action. One of these was a repeat offender. It took three weeks to get ahold of the supervisor for my area and get an answer. When contacted, MABCD had no answer as to why this was closed without any action. They went to that offending address that day and opened a new case. This violation was stalled. Why did it take so long to take action? I want to be able to talk with the inspectors and keep up to date on actions, deficiencies, and priorities. As the MOP, please let us use open communication directly with MABCD instead of using report and issue or the portal. I ask the city council to allow us to use this MOP as a pilot program per se to be more efficient in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, George and Alan. Madam Clerk, please call the next individual.
Robert Foster, drought plan.
Good evening. Over the last several months, the city council has addressed the tree canopy, heat islands, and now the drought. With all three of these topics, I believe that the current policies are reactive rather than proactive. Currently, the city is following a drought plan codified 11 years ago, and I believe it does not currently fit our current conditions. There are several changes that I would like to see, but I'll give you two examples. Currently, we're at 60.7% at Cheney, and conservation does not begin at 61% or 69%. Conservation begins at 99.9%. Unless we are in surplus conditions, it is difficult to justify any wasteful water usage. At 99%, I believe all sprinklers for irrigation should be prohibited during the heat of the day from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it should have been implemented years ago. It's wasteful. Well water should also have the same time restrictions. Although usage volume is not regulated by wells, it should not be wasted by watering during the day. If everyone is on the same time restrictions, implementation, compliance, and enforcement becomes easy. I believe a 12-month rolling average is ineffective. In late May, Cheney dropped below 69%. In July, there's a workshop. In August, the plan takes effect. We have delayed the implementation of this plan through the hottest months and the highest consumption because decisions are being made based off of historical data from 12 months ago. Currently, we're at 60.7%, and our 69% trigger is finally being activated. Halting tree planting is alarming to me. This is also reactive rather than proactive. Cheney modeling indicates that we could be regressing to a new drought stage in 12 to 18 months. Since the current policy halts tree planting, and there are expectations of the drought worsening, it opens the question of when tree planting would be allowed by the city and recommended for the public. When a tree is harvested from a tree farm, it can lose up to 50% of its root mass. It is cut out of the ground and put into a plastic pot and sold at a local box store or garden center. Since a large portion of the root mass has been cut from the tree, it struggles to stay alive. Trees like this are watered with hundreds, if not thousands, of gallons until the roots can become self-sufficient after two or three years. We need to completely change our approach to planting. This is a four-month-old redbud tree. At seven months, it'll be ready to go into the ground. I grow several of these every year, and I give them away, and I just made a mess up here. I noticed tonight that several people had drinks or bottled water with them. Each one of these trees I grow requires one bottle of water a week. Next year, they're going to need two bottles of water a week. Third year, they're going to need the equivalent of one toilet flush per week for watering. Third year, they're going to need the equivalent of one toilet flush per week for watering. The water required to grow thousands of these trees is more of a rounding error than a measurable volume of water. Let's talk money. The city is increasing revenues with this drought plan through fines for violations and potential penalties based on over-usage. The Parks Department budget is also being slashed. A year ago, the city spent $600,000 to have 1,000 trees planted. That is $600 per tree. This year, $700,000 was spent for 1,200 trees. I commend the city for taking this initiative, but with the drought conditions, how we do things must change. One-year-old trees like this one are readily available through multiple sources for $3 each. As an example, if the city were to purchase 20,000 of these seedlings for $60,000 away -- $60,000 and give them away to residents, they can plant them in their yards, and that would be the first step of being proactive rather than reactive. The dollar figure is a small fraction of the new revenue stream and the budget cuts. If only half of the seedlings survive, the city will have incurred a $6 expense per tree, which is 1% of the $600 trees that you've been purchasing in the past. City generates tax revenue based on real estate valuations. According to Arbor Day, a house with mature trees is worth 15% more. According to the Department of Energy, a shaded home saves 25% of their heating and cooling expenses. Trees create rain, produce oxygen, store carbon, create shade, save energy, increases home values, and reduces temperatures, all of which our city desperately needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items 1 through 14.
Do we have any items to be pulled or discussed?
With a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated August 5, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened August 5, 2024 for the following items. For engineering, we have sanitary sewer improvements for lift station number 16 for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $284,750. We have sanitary sewer improvements lift station number 23 for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $310,810. We have the sanitary sewer main extension to serve Area 151 addition for Noack Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $977,716. For purchasing, we have the sodium permanganate bulk delivery for Caris LLC in the amount of $238,305.60. We have the liquid ammonium sulfate bulk delivery for Baker Services Incorporated in the amount of $90,272. We have the $66,000 gross vehicle weight restriction cabin chassis with 40-yard dumping chipper body for Omaha Truck Center DBA Truck Center Companies for an aggregate bid total We have two $31,000 gross vehicle weight restriction cabin chassis flatbed winch trucks for Omaha Truck Center DBA Truck Center Companies in the amount of $330,946. We have the polyphosphate bulk delivery for Caris LLC for the aggregate total per year expected $402,135. We have the fire hose with couplings for Wees Fire and Safety Equipment LLC in the amount of $287,313.90. We have the video surveillance system for New East Patrol Substation for Asandafer Engineering and Controls Incorporated in the amount of $78,453.33. We have the polymer for use in wastewater solids de-watering facility for Polydine Incorporated. We are requesting your authorization for an extension of 120 days. This will bring us into alignment with another contract that we'd like to bid out, two compounds historically separated. This is how to become a vendor with the city. Please note for the public, we are transitioning our new procurement software, so we have been directing our public and interested vendors to our wichita.gov/purchasing site. All engineering bids are being processed through our new Bonfire System August 1, and we're attentively moving toward a October 1 deadline for everything. This is the open request for proposals out on the street, and I'd be happy to try to answer your questions. I recommend your approval.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and Vice Mayor and I probably have the same question. Could you go to Slide 10? Could you? And first of all, Josh, thank you for your presentation. You always do such a great job, and I know there's so much work before you get to this point, so thank you for all you and your team does. But can you just explain why the lowest bid wasn't selected for this?
Great question, and thank you for the opportunity. The reason that the low bid was not responsive in this case, they were non-responsive and Excuse me, I don't have it from memory.
That's okay. So when you say non-responsive, we reached out to them and they just didn't reach back, didn't answer back, or what does that mean?
Great question. So, non-responsive in public procurement means that we solicited a stated list of specifications. We stated specific requirements that they had to fulfill to be able to respond. In this specific instance, Shannon Chemical Corporation, they bid the wrong chemical mixture, so they did not bid the actual chemical composition that we're requesting. They are non-responsive. Non-responsive would mean they didn't have a capacity or ability to perform the work. That's not the case in this instance. The other thing we typically see is non-responsive, which in this instance, they didn't meet the specs.
Okay, thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. That was going to be my question, too. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. I motion to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts for August 5, 2024. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Service Employees International Union, SEIU, memorandum of agreement.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I am Jason Hood, the HR Director. I am here to discuss the recent collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated with SEIU. Okay, the SEIU tentative agreement duration is of two years between 2024 and 2026. It was ratified by SEIU members July 12 of 2024. The agreement covers 774 employees across most departments of the organization, and the agreement provisions will be incorporated into the revised budget. Highlights of the agreement, 2025, there's going to be a 6% GPA and a 2.5% merit step for those employees that are eligible, and in 2026, there's going to be a 6% GPA and a 2.5% merit step for those employees that are eligible. Other notable language changes, language in the contract was amended to clarify the seniority list posting requirements. Language in the contract was amended to clarify when bereavement leave should be taken. Additional language was added to provide guidance on the use of vacation leave in combination with bereavement, and language was added to outline a process for mandatory furloughs. Our recommendation is that you approve the 2024-2026 memorandum of agreement between the City and Service Employee International Union. Any questions?
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Ho Heisel.
Thank you, Mayor. What was the percentage on the SEIU vote?
The percentage?
Yeah, the approval percentage.
I'm not sure. It just says the... Let's see here. It doesn't say. It just says that the SEIU members voted in favor of it on July 12.
Okay. Esau, Mr. Freeman, do you have that info?
Yeah. It was... And I was going to get up and speak to this afterward, but I would say that it was only 65% to 67% in that range, and the reason for that wasn't necessarily that people didn't believe that we had negotiated good items, but there was a rather large concern with those employee groups that they didn't get the same 13% that police and fire got, and they felt like, you know, as the people who keep your drinking water clean and keep your streets up and snow removal and things like that, that they're equally important, and they expected to see some equity in that. So that's why the workers were split, and we know you guys are in a budget shortfall, but I would be remiss in not doing my job if I didn't share that tidbit.
Okay. How many members voted?
I would have to get that number for you.
Okay, yeah, I'm curious.
Yeah, no, I noticed we were talking about having 774 represented employees. One of the things I will say is, when I started this job 10 years ago, we had close to 860-some people that we represented, and so, you know, the workforce that is controlled by the city has consistently been downsized year after year, and, you know, we need to really take a look at that and invest in ourselves, invest in our workers, because every time we downsize the city resources and the employee numbers there, that takes out of control, out of the city council's control. When you subcontract work to somebody else or you put it to another organization, one of the things that would come to mind is snow removal, and when the Parks Department got rid of several people with lawn mowing jobs probably 10 years ago, I remember Janet Miller said that it was the worst decision she ever made on the city council. So that, you know, there's a lot of things that play into this, but a lot of this employee group feels overworked and under-respected.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes, thanks.
Councilmember Johnston.
Quick question. How many... What percent of the employees qualify for the 2%... 2.5% merit stepping?
I don't have that information, but what I can tell you is that everyone that is a member of the union at the time the contract is ratified, that is not at the max of their range, will receive it.
Okay. So that'd be eight and a half percent, eight and a half percent, so 17% over two years.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff? I see none, thank you. We will now open it up for public comment. Are there any individuals who would like to speak? Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you, and Vice Mayor, and council members. My name's Esau Freeman. I live at 12030 North Second Street, Sedgwick, Kansas. I am the Business Representative for Service Employees International Union Local 513. And I do want to say that we had some really great conversations during negotiations. I want to say thank you to all of the people who engaged in it, because although we didn't agree on everything, we really did dig deep on some issues that are important to the employee group, and so I appreciate all of the managers that engaged in that. I was a little disappointed that we didn't get city council members to sit in with us in the way that police and fire got, but Jason and I talked about that, and I understand the city's reasons. It's just, it's one more of those things that plays into my work group, feeling that there's not equity across the board, whether it be financial or the type of interactions they get, things like that, so. But I did want to tell you that the discussions were great, and we really did work for things. I told you before that it only passed by 65%, and there was one thing I wanted to correct that Jason said. I wish it was just the members of the union that got the pay increase, because those are the people who are paying into the employee organization. Those are the people who are fighting against the right to work for less in our state, and so one of the things that I think is extremely important to say there is, is that all 774 employees, Mr. Johnson, Councilmember Johnson, are going to receive that. And unless they're on a disciplinary probation or have some type of reason that they don't reach their merit, they will all get that 2%. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Beyond that, I did still want to say something about privatization. I know that we're talking about parks and, you know, what we're going to do with those things. Guys, our parks are one of the things that make our city so great. It's one of those places that if you don't have any money, you can take your family and enjoy yourself, and I've seen over the years our swimming pools turn into splash pads. You know, when I was a kid, we had a lot more animities and city workers and people taking care of our city, so I just want to say to the citizens and the council, I know you guys are in a hard position. I know that because businesses, you know, Dylan's prices went up, their bags got smaller, the boxes of cereal got smaller, we're all feeling that. But I don't want anybody to be mad at the city council because they're doing the best that they can, but we need to keep in mind that we have to invest in ourself, and constantly asking for tax breaks on this, that, and the other gets us to a position where we have less staff, we have less items in our city, we have big cracks in our sidewalks and potholes. And so I just want to put it out there to the citizens that when we're thinking about these things, remember that the employees that keep your drinking water fresh every day and keep you from getting sick and keep your roads moving during snowstorms, and the M A B C D people that I represent that have a hard job because sometimes they have to tell people things that they don't like, those people are important, and we appreciate the consideration that you've given to them. So, you know, those brownback deficits, you know, I really feel like we're kind of making the same cuts to prosperity that the brownback administration did, and I have to tell you, that is not going to work. And we've already seen it fail once, so let's not dig ourself in a hole. Let's not privatize our water, our parks, any of those things. We want to be proud of the workers of Wichita and the things that we have in Wichita, and you guys are all great, smart people, so I hope that you will take the time to come up with ways that we don't have to lose jobs, that we don't have to put things out to private organizations, and we, the citizens, we, the people of Wichita, the working-class people that make the world run every day, we don't get the things taken away from us that we need because of costs that businesses or, you know, other people don't want to pay. We all have to pay our fair share. Death and taxes, folks, the only thing you can count on. Thanks.
Good job.
Sharon O'Neil, 400 South Roosevelt. I've lived in Wichita most of my life. I'm a retired psychotherapist who spent over 40 years helping people solve problems. I'm also a Sedgwick County master gardener. I've lived in the College Hill neighborhood for over 30 years. I walk my dog in the park two to three times a day. I've met friends in the park, and we walk our dogs together daily. This is an example of how parks break social isolation and create a feeling of community. Most College Hill residents have lived there for 30 or 40 years.
Ms. Sherry, sorry to interrupt you. We're speaking about the SEIU contract. If you have further comments regarding the budget, we will get to the budget in the next item.
I thought they were talking about parks. Okay, I'll come back. I'll come back.
Again, we'll have public comment right now. This is item regarding the Service Employees International Union Memorandum of Agreement.
I'm William Leroy Glander. I live at 235 North Elizabeth. Coming with a deep heart, I am a former City of Wichita employee. I took pride in doing snow removal. I took pride being able to say I worked here, but with the increase of my house going up, my bills and all that, I was not making enough money. I wound up getting a part-time job out in Goddard and got offered a job that I wanted, that I've been trying to get with the city, as a mechanic. They offered me more money, and then they offered me a better retirement where I could retire in 15 years, and so I wound up taking it. But the problem is, we need to take care of our city employees, like Esau said, the guys that take care of the streets, because none of you could get to work safely, get to where you need to be safely without them doing their job. They wake up at odd hours, and they get on call, get a call at 1 o'clock in the morning. They got to wake up. They got to go and respond. We got to take pride in letting them know we respect those guys. Thank you.
Any further comments regarding this item? Any further comments regarding this item? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I don't have a comment regarding this item. I just wanted to take a point of privilege and welcome Senator Mary Ware for joining us this evening. So thank you for being here and thank you for your service.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Think I beat Councilmember Johnson to the punch. Representative Miller is sitting next to Mary Ware as well. So thank you for being here, Representative Miller as well. And also, to all our workers, we do value you. We do appreciate the work that you do every day, keeping our roads going, keeping the water going. I hope that we can continue to show more appreciation in the future and just let you know just how valued you are.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I just want to thank HR. I want to thank Esau and the union for this. I think this is a fair negotiation. I think it takes care of our workers. And again, I just want to echo the support. And thank you for everybody that does the work. We get us out to the bench. We have the easy job. Everybody else that works for the city has the tough job and has to get out on the street. So thank you for negotiating this and I am happy to support it.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Just a little pylon. Also want to thank HR for all your work on this and thank you too. And city employees, we certainly appreciate you. This is one small step. I say all the time, when we, when raises or bonuses are given, I've received them in the past. I never remember what I spent the money on, but I always remember that it made me feel appreciated and respected. And I hope that's how the employees feel. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, with a motion to approve the item as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven-zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Twenty-twenty-five Annual Operating Budget and twenty-twenty-five, twenty-thirty-four Capital Improvement Program.
Mayor, members of the council, pleased to address you tonight regarding the twenty-twenty-five Annual Operating Budget and the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty-four Capital Improvement Program. And welcome everyone in the audience to our first public hearing. Appreciate their engagement in the development of this budget. As we've discussed before, the recommended budget is based on our community priorities as well as the goals that have been established previously by the city council. The budget and the CIP are available on our website at www.wichita.gov. Up until tonight, I think we've had a pretty robust public engagement process already. And I'm looking forward to the feedback that we get during our public hearings, especially tonight and on the thirteenth. We've, just a reminder of everything that we've done. We started this process actually in twenty-twenty-three when we had the community survey. We also had, started the council workshops, which we had almost on a monthly basis, starting in January. We had budget roundtables with residents in January and in March. We had two social media town halls specializing in street maintenance and in crime prevention. And then we presented the preliminary or proposed budget concepts to the district advisory boards in May. And then we also had a budget simulator that asked residents and members of the public to try to help all of us balance this budget. And I want to talk just a minute about that because it proved to be an interesting experience for those that actually got involved in the process. We had about two-hundred-and-fifty people that participated and gave us guidance on how we could or should balance the budget. I will tell you that many of the comments that we captured through this process was that they recognized what a difficult procedure or processes is. And frankly, most of them are not envious of the decisions that you have to make based on what they told us. Two things that I do want to highlight, when we asked them to balance the budget, that meant that they had to make cuts in many service areas. The two areas that received the fewest number of cuts were our street repair program and our city parks. I did mention that we started this process with a citizen survey and actually that has guided a lot of our public engagement process and helped us identify the key principles or priorities for this budget. And those are, and the mayor, you could probably go along and recite this for me, but it's prioritizing crime prevention, increasing funding for pavement maintenance, supporting economic development, and addressing housing insecurity. Just a real brief reminder of some of the programs that are being initiated in the twenty-twenty-five budget to address these priority areas. In crime prevention, we've talked on a couple of occasions now about this not meaning just more police officers on the street, but actually a three-pronged approach, one that is geared towards prevention. Another piece that involves intervention and enforcement, which are officers on the street, as well as a few other programs. But also rehabilitation, giving folks an opportunity to have a second chance and to actually move forward as productive members of the community. The twenty-twenty-five operating budget contains approximately forty-five million dollars for the initiatives and those three priority categories, again, for crime prevention. General Fund, of course, has funding for on-street services in the police department, but we're also involved in housing programs as well as early intervention programs for our youth in recreation and library. We also, on the treatment side, are putting money into various alcohol and drug abuse programs. We are, the council, using ARPA dollars, is moving forward with a Violence Interrupter Initiative in order to reduce our violent, to address violent offenders in the community, excuse me. Then finally, I think we're looking at a game changer in terms of how we go about policing in this community, and that's the introduction of the Real-Time Information Center. And that's where we're hoping to leverage technology and data for better outcomes. Terms of pavement maintenance, the council, not only, if they were to approve the twenty-twenty-five budget, would not only endorse what has been done by previous councils, but actually take it one step further. We're now to the point where there's a brand-new program. We're introducing twenty million dollars for concrete street pavement maintenance. That seems to be one of the most difficult programs that we've had to get off the ground because of its expense. And we're introducing that in this capital improvement program that I'll talk about in a little while. We are upping the amount that would go into pavement maintenance over the next ten years, up to a hundred-and-forty-nine million dollars, significantly different than where we were even ten years ago. And then maintaining thirty-nine million dollars in the budget for dirt street paving. The General Fund also has eighteen million dollars for street maintenance efforts on a daily basis performed by our staff. Terms of economic development, we're recommending that a million dollars be transferred into the Economic Development Fund. That fund, excuse me, finances many of our economic development initiatives, especially those that are targeted at small business and are updated to the downtown master plan. We've talked a little bit about the Business Improvement District Downtown, the SMID, and the downtown development efforts that are funded through that program and that funding mechanism. And we are now starting to work towards the initiation or the implementation, excuse me, of the downtown parking plan. Affordable housing is an issue that has really, I think, moved to the forefront with this council. The council has allocated five million dollars in ARPA funding for the Affordable Housing Fund. That is coming alongside our program that is trying to redevelop our former public housing units. And I think we'll have some great success in terms of seeing those units redeveloped and on the tax rolls. And then probably one of the biggest initiatives this council's taken on is the creation of the Multi-Agency Center to deal in a comprehensive way with our homelessness program. Just briefly, it wouldn't be a budget presentation. I didn't show you the pie charts. The total budget is seven-hundred-and-sixty-three million, almost seven-hundred-and-sixty-four million dollars. On the left-hand side of this chart, you'll see our funding sources. Since this says our entire budget includes utilities and therefore charges for services represents a significant chunk of our revenue, property taxes comes in second at twenty-two percent. Forty-one percent of our expenses are for salaries and benefits, and seventeen percent for debt service contractuals represent nineteen percent, which again is a little bit high because we're including our utilities. So now, the rest of my comments, I think, will be pretty much focused on the General Fund, which is what I think our residents consider to be the true budget because it supports our ongoing daily operations in our key service areas. On the left-hand side, you see our prime revenue sources. Property tax represents the largest revenue to the General Fund at thirty-six percent. And then you'll see that sales tax and franchise tax revenues then come in behind and help prop up our General Fund. I will note that ten percent of our, excuse me, our revenue in twenty-twenty-five will come from investment earnings, which is unusual if you look at our past practice, or past performance in the last ten years. Unfortunately, if you followed what's been going on at the Fed level, we'll probably start to see that revenue drop because we'll see drops in the interest rates by the Fed, which will reduce our earnings on our investments. On the right-hand side, you'll see how we spend our money. And as you know, seventy-five percent of our General Fund expenditures go towards salaries and benefits. If you look at the categories of our expenditures, you'll note that about seventy-four percent of our expenses go for what you would call basic city services, probably what our residents would call basic city services. That's fire, police, and public works, maintenance of our infrastructure. There's been a lot discussed and written about in terms of our funding challenges that will begin in twenty-twenty-six. And I just, again, want to note, the twenty-twenty-five budget that's being proposed to you tonight is balanced. However, in twenty-twenty-six, we anticipate that we will start to see our expenditures outpace our revenue. And this is a structural deficit, one that it will be difficult to address. It's not just a one-time difficulty. And it's happening because of the declining interest rates that I talked about, also what we anticipate to be a leveling off of the property valuations in our community, and then our growth in wages in order to be able to fairly compensate our employees and to be competitive in the marketplace. As is being presented to you tonight, as I said, we have a balanced budget in twenty-twenty-five. However, we're projecting a small deficit in twenty-twenty-six that would grow to near ten million in twenty-twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-eight. And that is after you have already done some heavy lifting through our monthly workshops. Just a reminder that so far, you have trimmed about eleven million dollars in the twenty-twenty-six budget, twelve-point-two million from the twenty-twenty-seven budget, and twelve-and-a-half million from twenty-twenty-eight. And yet we're still looking at this, these deficits projected for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Some of the things that we are looking at addressing to help close up that gap, we're looking at centralizing some of our financial services, which have been decentralized for a number of years. We're looking at trying to improve our cost recovery for many services, especially where the user has the ability to pay and gets a special service from us. We are looking at our fleet practices, also focusing more on outcomes and performance measures, looking at areas where we have high vacancy rates and have had for several years, and maybe rightsizing some of those operations, and sitting down with our employee groups and talking primarily about some of our benefit programs, focusing on health insurance especially. So that's it on the operating budget. On the capital improvement program, a reminder, this is our ten-year infrastructure plan. It too follows the city's mission and goals, and it is primarily based on maintaining the infrastructure that we have in place. There are some enhancements, some growth in our infrastructure, but the primary expenditures in CIP are for maintenance of existing infrastructure. You'll see here that we have a very diverse revenue source in terms of funding the CIP, especially over the ten years. It's a big document, and you're talking about a sizable investment in this community, over three billion dollars over the ten years. Here's how we're spending those funds. Water is a significant investment for us, but so are streets. And this was not the case, as I said, ten years ago. But you'll see that we have over five-hundred-and-seventy-two million dollars invested in our streets over the ten-year periods of the CIP. We have a one-time movement of dollars into the debt service fund that are recommended for twenty-twenty-five. That would be, allow us to cash fund some of our projects that would have been debt-funded otherwise. And that gives us capacity in the future to be able to tackle some of our infrastructure issues. We're prioritizing maintenance, especially in our street system and our public buildings, as well as public safety. I've already talked about the street expenses that are included in the CIP. I won't really go into that again. We have about a hundred-and-sixty-four million dollars for public safety infrastructure, which includes new police stations and fire stations as well as equipment. We also have about half of the total CIP that's going into maintenance projects, including thirty-three million for cultural facilities and thirty-two million for other city buildings. We do have challenges with the budget or with our capital improvement program, but they're not as significant as what we are experiencing in our General Fund, and primarily because we benefit, when interest rates drop, we actually benefit from our borrowing of money to help fund our capital improvements. And so our debt service dollars will go farther. Just a reminder, when I introduced the budget to you last month, you gave me about twenty homework assignments and those, we are slowly getting that information out to you. We gave you some this morning that dealt with CIP improvements at the golf courses. We answered some issues you had regarding the Park Master Plan and funding for the Multi-Agency Center. Talked about what the impact would be of a mill levy rate increase. Also, provided you a little bit of information on our park maintenance and forestry activities. And then there were questions you had about star bonds in TIF districts, and we've answered those. There'll be another set of documents coming out to you tomorrow to, again, try to get all twenty of those issues addressed. Reminder that after tonight, you have two more public hearings, August thirteenth, next Tuesday, and then the final hearing and the adoption of the budget on August twentieth. As we talked about before, I encourage members of the public, if they really want to make an impact on this budget, tonight and August thirteenth are the best times to do it. It's very hard for this council, given the limitations that are placed on you by state law, to really make an impact the day that you're adopting the budget. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions before you solicit public input.
Questions for City Manager Layton, beginning with Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, you mentioned about the public safety infrastructure. Can, just for the public, if they might not know, can you talk about the new stations, the new police stations that are in the works? Just so people kind of know some of the things that we have going on as far as public safety.
Just the, in the near future, and I'd say that's over the next three years or so, we are almost completed with the E-sub station for police, and we are in our design process for the West substation. So those two police stations will be replaced. We also have purchased land for a southwest fire station, and we are hoping to close on site by the end of the year or early next year for a northwest fire station. And those to address service concerns or service difficulties that have been identified, especially in terms of response times for those two western areas in our community.
And then the station out by the, by ninety-six will be moved?
That will be moved, and that will be funded by the state because it's because of improvements to K-96 that that station needs to be relocated.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
This could be on one of your follow-ups tomorrow, but I know we hadn't asked Public Works in terms of the dirt streets, the thirty-nine million that's allocated towards dirt streets, if that was allocated towards just residential existing roads? If there'd be a better bang for the buck, is, will that information be following up as well?
That'll be in my third. That'll be in my third batch, if I remember correctly.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I see no further questions for staff at this time.
Thank you.
We will now open it up for public comment. Please state your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
Sharon O'Neil, four hundred South Roosevelt. I've lived in Wichita most of my life. I'm a retired psychotherapist who spent over forty years helping people solve their problems. I'm also a Sedgwick County master gardener. I've lived in the College Hill neighborhood for over thirty years. I walk my dog in College Hill Park two to three times a day. I've met friends in the park, and we walk our dogs together daily. This is an example of how parks break social isolation and create a feeling of community. Most College Hill residents have lived here for thirty or even forty years. Because of the park and mature shade trees, couples, families, and children are frequently seen walking and biking along the streets. The park is filled with people doing different activities. Many schools bring their tracker tennis teams to practice. Groups of people can be seen playing basketball, baseball, soccer, football, frisbee. Kids are seen sledding the hills in the winter after a snow, and kids are at the swimming pool during the summer. People can be seen picnicking or reading a book under a shade tree, and occasionally a tightrope walker, or a person relaxing in a hammock. One neighbor that lived on the park even had outdoor concerts for everyone in his backyard. Parks encourage play and create improved physical and mental health. Research shows that money spent on park is the most cost-effective way to lower long-term healthcare costs. People choose to live in College Hill despite the houses being old and needing update or repairs because of College Hill Park and the atmosphere that it creates. Parks and green space improve property values. Research shows that parks and recreation create three times the economic benefit for every dollar spent. Wichita needs to focus on providing more parks, even if they are small within the city. Wichita has less parks and green space compared to other low-density cities. Low-income and disadvantaged kids need parks and outdoor recreation activities close to where they live. Research shows parks reduce juvenile crime. One person in jail costs taxpayers one hundred thousand dollars a year. I believe everyone needs a park with mature shade trees within a ten-minute walk of their home. Do not close any parks. With global warming and the dangers it poses for Wichita residents, Wichita needs to protect parks and green space due to the important role that green infrastructure plays in controlling flooding and urban heat control. I have included a newspaper article on the extreme heat the U.S. is experiencing and the negative impact on mental health. For the elderly and poor, access to a close park with large shade trees could be the difference between life and death during a heat wave if they do not have air conditioning. Scrap the plans for the four-hundred-and-twenty-acre Crystal Prairie Lake Park in northwest Wichita, which is projected to cost over twenty-five million dollars. Wichita worked with NASA to identify heat islands in the city and needs to remain focused on these remedies. Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, has developed a way to even help street trees thrive for decades in harsh conditions. There's a problem of Wichita maintaining its public parks and spaces. Century Two and A Price Woodard Park are centrally located downtown between Broadview and the Hyatt Hotel. In 2022, Lowe's donated fifteen thousand dollars of landscape materials and wages for twenty employees to work a full day at A Price Woodard Park landscaping. Many other citizens also volunteered their time in this cleanup effort. I have a couple of pictures of what it looked like afterwards in 2022, when families could be seen relaxing and enjoying the park. This is a vision of concrete and the three dead trees in 2024, since Wichita has not turned on the irrigation in the park or water for the large cooling waterfall. No one is currently using the park in its present condition. I do not understand Wichita's refusal to maintain beauty in its public spaces, especially when located next to the convention center and across from the Chamber of Commerce. Wichita is wasting every dollar it spends on marketing and visit Wichita if it will not maintain its parks and public spaces. This kind of neglect discourages any future donations or community involvement from other corporations. The city park department needs to hire a full-time volunteer coordinator, grant writer, that could coordinate volunteers to assist in maintaining beauty in parks and public spaces, much like New York City does with Central Park or the High Line. Another example of an enchanting pocket park in downtown Philadelphia is the John F. Collins Park. It's between two tall buildings. It's locked at night by whimsical art gates. It's exclusively maintained by volunteers and even rented out for special events. What pictures don't show is the soothing sounds of the birds in this enchanting green space. Thank you for your time.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you so much for being here and sharing.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Yeah, a quick question. I echo the concerns about supporting existing park facilities and making sure that they are up to par. I know that there, it wasn't the previous speaker, but it was a previous speaker, I don't remember who. I think there's a misconception in terms of page two-eighty-six and two-eighty-seven of the budget, that there is a cut to parks. Could we, Mr. Manager, talk about the move from Culture Arts and Services to the City Manager's office, that it actually isn't a budget cut to parks, and we're actually adding three new positions in the proposed budget?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. That is true. We were, we had cultural arts services that were provided, they actually had been moved as a division over to Parks and Recreation in anticipation that we were going to have a merger with the county. That has not moved forward, and we believe that the better home for that service, those services, right now is in the City Manager's office. And so, we have moved the cultural services in 2025 into the City Manager's office.
So there's no cuts to parks, and they're actually adding three positions in the proposed budget?
I'd have to go back and look at the positions, but there are no program cuts that are anticipated at this time in the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Crystal Lake is still cut from the CIP, right?
The vast majority of the improvements for Crystal Prairie Lake are not in the capital improvement program. The recommended capital improvement program does fulfill a commitment that was made to residents in that area, that we would try to get a complete path system. So the pathway is shown in the capital improvement program to get under K-96 and to get an extension up Hoover Road.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Yeah, most of that is cut already for the Crystal Lake project.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to tell my colleague, it's Crystal Prairie Lake. I like Crystal Lake, but we got some pushback about that.
Okay, we'll put Crystal Lake up there with Poetry Park.
We'll continue public comment. Please state your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Harold Selectaway. I live at three-fifty-one North Fern Street in the Delano District. I am chairman of the Board of Directors of ICT Trees, a four-oh-one-C-three nonprofit, whose mission is to promote the maintenance and expansion of Wichita's tree canopy, which has diminished over the past several decades. I wish to thank you, I want to thank you, for the opportunity you've provided for citizens to speak about their concerns with the upcoming city budget. For those of you who may have read my commentary in yesterday's Wichita Eagle, I do not believe that there is a war about to commence over Wichita parks. But I didn't write the headline for the commentary. I stand by what I wrote, but not the headline. Using the word "war" is a mistake because it sorts everyone into camps of for and against. I think we all support Wichita's system of parks, but I believe we should all support them more. The Trust for Public Land publishes a survey of city parks every year. This year, they surveyed one hundred of the largest cities across the United States. Wichita ranked below the median in almost every area. For example, the amount of land set aside for parks. But we're not alone. Tulsa and Oklahoma City also rank below the median. Of cities in our region, only Omaha scored above the median ranking. But in one area, Wichita did score above the median. According to this report, sixty-eight percent of low-income households live within a ten-minute walk of a city park. These neighborhood parks are important to the people who live near them. We should cherish them and add to their number. The manager's budget message talks of the hard decisions to be made for the 2026 budget. Those decisions are also an opportunity for this council to reaffirm Wichita's historic commitment to city parks, to the maintenance of those parks, and to the Park Forestry Division. I would also like to express my concern regarding the city's decision to suspend tree planting, which may be as much a budgetary issue as a drought issue. There are millions upon millions of dollars of federal money available to cities that choose to repair and rebuild their fractured tree canopy. There are many thousands, if not millions, of dollars available in private grants available to nonprofits with a proven track record. In 2022, the city of Wichita partnered with NASA to study the relationship between heat, trees, and environmental justice. NASA's final report identified seventeen census tracts at elevated heat risk to vulnerable citizens due to the inequable distribution of the city's tree canopy. Beginning this past spring, the city's Park Department and Forestry Division embarked on a vigorous program of planting trees in or near these urban heat islands. The small but measurable progress the city has made, I fear the small but measurable progress the city has made on this issue can be jeopardized by what happens in our 2026 budget. ICT Trees, this past spring, conducted a successful free tree distribution program in zip code areas six-seven-two-one-four and six-seven-two-oh-eight. We were assisted by a grant from Evergy, Evergy's Green Team, the Forestry Division at the city of Wichita, the Arbor Day Foundation, and Wichita's local chapter of Kappa Alpha Kappa. And I don't know if any of those ladies are here. I apologize for forgetting the name of the local chapter. And we had other volunteers involved. We wanted to do the same thing again this fall, narrowing our focus to six-seven-two-one-four and expanding our community outreach and the numbers of trees that we would distribute to homeowners in that zip code. But we've had to put those plans on hold because the city is recommending that homeowners should not plant trees. Trees use far less water than fescue lawns. It may be true that some homeowners water trees using home irrigation systems. That is wasteful. There are better ways, and we have literature and training to offer homeowners about how to care for their new trees. So I'm leaving you with a couple of questions. One, does this budget for this year, for this coming year, 2025, permit the city to carry out activities in the spring of 2025 as this past spring, planting trees, street trees? That's one question. Will the Forestry Department be there and helping with that? And then the second question is, can ICT Trees count on the city to continue to support our activities, especially those addressed to mitigating the fearful impact of climate change on our urban environment? Can we count on the city to help this spring and next year? So those are, those are two questions. I would like the city to help us this fall. I would like to see us be able to do that, but we can't suck it out of our thumb. We have to go into these communities and speak to people, churches, neighborhood organizations. These are, especially six-seven-two-one-four is eighty percent rental housing. We plant, homeowners plant those trees, not rental companies. So we have to find that twenty percent. We can only do that by talking to people in those communities, and that has to start now.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, I have a question. You know, we've talked about potentially suspending any planting for the fall, and I guess I kind of have mixed feelings on it. You know, we've really taken some initiatives this year to repair and focus on our tree canopy, and I think for the first time in, I don't know how many years, we've replaced equal or close to the amount of trees that we have removed, which I think is amazing. But my question is, if we're not going to plant this fall, do we hold the money over and double down on the spring and hope that we are out of the drought by then to plant next year? Or, I believe last time I asked, we were more than a thousand work orders behind on tree maintenance. So I also wonder if this is an opportunity to work hard and try to catch up on some of our tree maintenance, because some of the last couple rains that we've had, I know, Diana, in the, in the audience, just more big limbs are coming down for trees that were slated to be removed close to a year ago. So I just have kind of mixed feelings and just kind of curious on what the best move is.
Ultimately, the council will have to make that decision about priorities. If you were to follow the direction from the 2024, if you were to follow the direction we are given from the 2024 budget, we would keep funds available in 2025 to make up for the trees that weren't planted this year because of the drought. Troy Hauptman can talk a little bit about the backlog we have, and also, I think we may have entered into contract already for some of the tree planting that would already have committed, commit us to fund that whenever the drought is, we have some drought relief.
I don't want to assume that it's okay for the city to plant and water, but then, you know, say that the public can't do that. So I just want to make sure that we're not talking out of both sides of our mouth, but I don't want to delay the canopy, I don't know, I just kind of have mixed feelings on it.
Mayor and Council, Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation. Councilmember Ballard, a couple of numbers I wanted to share with you. So you had asked in regards to the backlog, in regards to the tree removal, and we have two-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty work orders that need to be completed to catch up on that backlog. A couple of items I wanted to share with you as well.
Is that tree removal and maintenance, or just maintenance altogether?
Tree removals. Yep. Couple of the items in regards to the questions that you asked, and I also wanted to share some numbers from the public comment is, this past year, we actually planted eight-hundred bare root trees, and we planted thirteen-hundred of the bar, ball, and bar-lap trees as well. So the, the idea that we're moving forward with using smaller trees, seedlings, is something that we're putting into our plan for future plantings. So that is happening, as well as we're working with the school district in regards to planting some smaller trees, but also developing seedlings with their seeds and their work. So that is still happening as well. Let's see, a couple of other things. We do have four-hundred-and-fifteen trees on hand that are bare root trees in gravel, and we're holding off on those to plant those next year. In the meantime, they are in gravel, and we are maintaining them by watering them for their survival. And that was at a cost of about fourteen thousand dollars. We have a remaining amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars in our tree purchasing fund that, as the City Manager had mentioned, that could be held over till next year to use that for purchasing trees for next year.
So that's not, I know how much it costs to take down trees. That is not very many tree, that is nowhere close to twenty-five-hundred tree removals.
No, that would give us about eleven percent of the backlog that we have right now.
How much is in the budget for tree removal, aside from the eleven percent that it would help with?
I didn't bring that number with me, I apologize.
Is it a significant amount?
So if you think about what the budget is for forestry, probably about... So if you think about what the budget is for forestry, probably about seventy percent of it is in regards to maintenance and tree removal. Thirty percent is probably in regards to after-hours emergencies, dealing with those type of situations, and then the remainder, new tree and tree take, and tree care for the new trees. So we, even though we plant them, we still have to go out and water them. So there's continual costs after we plant them as well. So that's generally where we are with that budget.
Okay. Thank you.
City Manager Leighton, can you please pull up our community survey matrix and keep that up, please? We will now continue with public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I want to preface this by expressing our gratitude for the movement we are moving forward in the fire service here in Wichita. We are encouraged, but I want to express some urgency that we are in and have been in for several years. My name is Ted Bush, I'm Wichita Firefighter's Local 135 President. In a few short hours, we were gathered to say goodbye to our brother Ty Voth. He was a friend, a son, a brother of two sisters and a brother. He's a firefighter who served his community with pride and great distinction, and he was only twenty-seven years old. Ty collapsed while fighting a mutual aid residential fire on August 1st and never recovered. It is and remains a great shock to his brother and sister firefighters, not only in Wichita, but other communities that Ty served and will continue to be a shock for us for some time. While at the hospital, firefighters stood by in support of Ty and his Station Five crew as hospital staff diligently and with great effort tried to save his life. When hospital staff advised members that Ty had passed, they didn't waver. They formed a line to take their turn, one by one, and to walk into Ty's room and honor him and say goodbye. And I want the citizens to understand what else happened. Crews who were on duty also came to the hospital. They quietly stood in line with their fellow grieving firefighters to take their turn and go in and do the same. But they didn't go home after that. In the midst of this great tragedy, and the pain they were feeling, and the memory of their lost brother, they jumped right back on those rigs and went back to work answering 911 calls and finished their tour, finished their shift. I want everyone to imagine the great dedication and the fortitude it takes to do that, knowing what has happened and the tragic result. Some are close, personal friends of Ty. They still answered emergency calls. Historically, the Wichita budget over the years for fire service has been inadequate, and this continues. It continues to the point of critical levels and is affecting public fire safety and the safety of firefighters performing that emergency work. This has resulted in critical shortfalls in staffing, fire station concentration, and long response times. Response times are the measure used to determine if a fire department is successful in its mission or it's not. It's simple as that. The sooner firefighters arrive on scene of an incident, the sooner they can mitigate that situation, allowing for a safer outcome for citizens and firefighters. A fire that is not controlled quickly will continue to eat away at the building's structural integrity, increasing the risk to firefighters by increasing the safety impact of that fire and increase the risk to citizens by delaying the time for a possible rescue or medical treatment. I'll leave you with a quick comparison. In 1979, Wichita had a population of 261,000 people and covered 101.4 square miles. Wichita firefighters at that time responded to 11,790 emergency calls. To accomplish this, Wichita had thirty full-size fire apparatus classified by the NFPA as fire suppression units, fire engines that put fire out. Wichita Fire had 124 firefighters on the streets making alarms as minimum daily staffing. Now we're in 2024. With a population increase of fifty-one point seven percent, a sixty-one point seven percent of geographical increase, and a whopping four hundred and eight percent increase in 911 calls serviced by firefighters today. Wichita City Hall expects firefighters to accomplish this service with a zero increase in full-size NFPA-compliant fire suppression units. We have the same amount of fire engines on the streets today as we did in 1979, and that includes, and that's forty-five years. That includes, including in the thirty full-size units we have today, includes the two grant-funded truck companies. Without those grant-funded trucks, we would actually fall below 1979 unit levels, suppression unit levels. Staffing is no different. 1979, we had a minimum of 124 firefighters operating on the streets. We compare that to 2024, where the minimum daily staffing today is 129. We have had personnel operation increase over that time of five people on the streets making calls. I know some of you are going, I know this is a shock, and these numbers are unbelievable. I had to check them myself. I know some of you are going to Ty's funeral tomorrow, and we truly, truly greatly appreciate that, and there is a time to grieve, but real care for policymakers comes after we bury the firefighter who died doing his or her duty. It is then you can truly match the dedication they show every day. Give them the tools to be successful. Give them the proper budget and staffing to keep them safe as possible as they operate in a very dangerous job. That's how we show our appreciation. That's how you show your appreciation and care, and they certainly deserve it.
Thank you, Ted. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your words, Ted, and thank you and condolences on behalf of, I believe, all of City Council towards the sacrifice and for the loss of firefighter Voth. I look forward to continuing the discussion about how to fund you guys and give you the tools that you guys need to keep us safe, to keep my family safe. So I do appreciate you being up here, and again, condolences to you and all of our fire family, and thanks to all our first responders who put their lives on the line every single day.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Ted, thank you for being here and for advocating for all of the fire that keeps our city and county safe. We're extended out even into the county. So you said in a forty-five-year period, we've added approximately 135,000 people. We've added sixty more square miles of coverage, and we've added five firefighters. Five. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Leighton.
This is probably not the evening to get into a debate, but I, the council has committed significant resources to the fire department for the very reason that it is one of the most important services that we have. A different, the council asked us to look at staffing levels across the organization for the last twenty years. In twenty, in 2005, we had three hundred and ninety-seven positions funded in the fire department. In 2024, we had four hundred and ninety-seven. That's a hundred more positions over that twenty-year period, more than any other department, including the police department, and then a much higher percentage increase than police department and all other departments. And to give you an idea how the council has emphasized public safety, there have been a hundred and seventy police and fire positions added in that twenty-year period. Across the organization, there's only a net increase of four, which means that many other service areas have actually seen a decrease in staffing in order to offset the high priorities that have been placed on police and fire. So doesn't mean that we don't have service needs. I'm not contradicting that at all. I just want to, I don't want it to be said that the council hasn't supported the ongoing needs of police and fire in this community.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for adding that context. I believe, as long as some of us have been on Council, Hoheisel and Councilmember Tuttle and Johnson, we have made strides to try to help catch up the fire department, but we still have a long ways to go, and so that is extremely important to me. I know that there's still gaps. Even the temporary fire station that we put up at Thirteenth and West Street, it ended up being the sixth busiest fire station in the city. So, and that was just a temporary station and very close to where a station is needed from our LeVrum study. So I just appreciate the context, but we still have a long ways to go. So thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
While we're on this topic, can you just give a brief timeline of when the Southwest station is expected to be completed? That's the first station since, I believe, 2008. Do we have a timeline of when that will be completed?
We do know, and I just can't remember. We're going to buy the, we're buying the property this year and doing the design work. I just can't, I think it's 2026 when it opens, but I need the chief to remind me.
Good evening, Chief Jamie Snow. Yes, we have, the land purchase, we're currently in the process of hiring an architect. So we've already went out to RFP on it. We ran into a little glitch. We had a meeting this week in regards to the glitch, just some language, basically. If we get that information back in regards to cleaning up the language, then we should have an architect onboard, and we'll start that design. That's probably about, between the design going back and forth and the construction of it, we're probably looking at about eighteen months, so we hope to be in it by the end, or by the early 2026, at worst case, hopefully 2025, at the end of 2025, but probably closer to 2026, to be realistic.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
We'll continue with public comment.
My name is Mary Catherine Vernon, and I live in Midtown, Wichita. Let's see. Healthy trees and green space are vital to the public health and safety. They're critical to mitigating the effects of climate change. With climate change, average temperatures will steadily rise unless we find ways to drastically reduce the CO2 and methane emissions. Wichita is something Wichita has been laggard in doing. Healthy trees provide shade and cooling for everyone under and near them. They also remove CO2 from and add oxygen to our atmosphere. Wichita has a deficit of trees compared to other cities. Therefore, we need to plant more trees and provide them with necessary water and maintenance, and this should be overseen by a certified arborist. It would help, also help, to educate the people on planting their own trees. And this could be facilitated perhaps by a little help from the Central County Extension. They do a real good job of educating people about growing things. In my neighborhood, there are numerous dead or dying trees. They are not only, not only present a danger from falling branches and entire trees, but they offer fuel for fires. These trees need to be pruned or removed. And I'm sorry if I'm repeating what's already been said. My hearing is really bad, and I haven't heard most of what's been said. Anyway, the remains could be chipped and used for mulch for newly planted trees. We need to commit to our energy to these efforts, and I believe it would be a good idea to move the park and street trees over into the higher quality and higher importance segment because it is such a vital thing. Let's see. I believe that our economic growth is dependent upon having a beautiful city, and part of having a beautiful city is having beautiful trees and green space. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. City Manager Leighton, can you remove the matrix now so that the timer can be seen by our guests? Just a quick note, higher quality, higher importance means that it already is being provided as a high quality already. So the bottom right means high importance but low quality, meaning you want us to work on that a little bit more. Thank you. We'll continue with public comment.
The reason that I am here tonight is to talk about the importance of Paratransit, and I noticed it was down in the lower left-hand corner, so that was pointed out to me. I'm not, okay. Paratransit is more than just a ride. My name is Alisa DePontier, and I live at 142 North Volusia, and I am a member of the legally blind community here in Wichita. And although my cause is rare, my optic nerves are heavily damaged, and so my brain, my eyes don't have a conversation too often anymore, so. But the impact it has had on my life is a familiar journey for many of us who are legally blind. First of all, you give up your car keys and your license, and next you say goodbye to your independence and your spontaneity because now you must plan every outing. You say hello to isolation because you hate to ingratiate yourself on your family, your friends, and kind neighbors for a ride. And isolation can bring onboard its own set of baggage. Then there's the well-meaning people that tell you, just get yourself one of those little scooters, and you just want to quietly think to yourself, let me hand you the blindfold, and I'm going to let you to go first on the scooter, because. And then the other one is just call Uber, and it's just not as simple of a solve as that. I've tried that. So to the rescue come the amazing people at Envision and the kind and hard-working people at Paratransit. I can't say enough good things about those two institutions. Paratransit is not a luxury. It's a necessity for those of us that use it. We aren't out for a joyride. Most of the people using Paratransit are going to some sort of healthcare appointment or job. And until you are able to walk in my shoes, it's pretty hard to imagine how it feels. I would, I couldn't imagine it until it happened to me. So Paratransit is a return of some semblance of independence for me. I personally feel like I'm in charge of something in my life again, and I have options with it. So my sense of independence raises, my feeling of isolation diminishes, and life feels just a little bit better again. So I want all of you to understand that Paratransit is So I want all of you to understand that Paratransit is way, way more than just a ride. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Councilmember Glasscock.
Alyssa, Alyssa, I have a few questions real fast. I echo, in terms of our transportation system, the most important thing our transportation system does is Paratransit. And so, thank you for talking about that. In particular, what are some of the biggest challenges you face with Paratransit? And what would be some improvements that you would want?
Okay. Last fall, there was a White Cane Walk that Envision put together. And at that moment, I learned there are so many of us in Wichita. It just flabbergasted me and felt good at the same time because I wasn't alone. So on that walk, it was like a two-block walk. I talked to as many people as I possibly could walking to find out what was their biggest frustration or challenge. And I didn't want to talk negative about anything, but it was Paratransit. And it's for real because like this morning, I had to schedule a ride for a healthcare appointment. You can only schedule seven days before the appointment. I call at eight o'clock sharp because if you call any later than that, they're booked. And, and you're just, that's when I tag, you know, neighbor or my husband or something like that, but, or they can get you there, but they can't get you home. And so, that's hard. And then, like mine, many times I'm there to my appointment two hours early, and I get to wait an hour to get a ride home. I'm there, that's all I care about, to be honest. And I'm getting home, so I'm not ever gonna complain about the wait time or anything like that. But just a little thought in that legally blind people, we don't need a bus full of everything that, to serve us, you know, I've heard the suggestion, if you just contracted Uber, I mean, because we just need a car that we can see coming up. When I call Uber, I cannot track all the things happening on my phone. They're trying to tell you what kind of car that's gonna pull up and how many minutes, and I just, I can't do that. So for somebody to tell me, okay, seven days in advance, this is when you need to watch, you've got a 30-minute period that you watch for, they pull up right in front of your house, it's big, you can see it, they honk three times, and so you know that they're there. And they make sure that you get off safely, that you get in the door. They're just kind, caring people that get what you're dealing with. So more of them would be, honestly, if I had to speak for the large group of people that I talk to.
Well, thank you for telling your story. I think our stories matter. And so, I appreciate that. And again, when we're looking at transit, the, how do we get to people's door is more important to me, and how can we serve populations that need that type of help? So thank you for-
Can I ask you a quick question? In your study, will you be talking to the people that ride Paratransit at all, or?
That'd be a question for Bob, for Transportation Director. And last comment I have for you two as well, I think this would be something great to bring to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board, just to have that conversation more. And maybe they're talking about that in some way, but I think this would be perfect for them to discuss different ways that we can make policy changes up here. And I know Penny's has a few answers as well.
The redesign study currently underway is primarily focused on the fixed route system, so isn't really looking at the Paratransit complimentary service. So, but we would, I liked your idea of going to Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board. We also proceed with the Access Advisory Board. I know Envision is a prominent member on that board as well, but we will take feedback at any point, anytime, but it's not included in that study.
Okay. Thank you, Penny.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just also echo, thank you for coming to share your story. Oftentimes, we don't, we don't hear very often when we get it right or very much positive feedback. So I really appreciate you, even though you have some suggestions on how to make it better and accessible to more people, really appreciate you coming to share your story and be the voice of others that couldn't make it today. So, thank you.
We'll continue with public comment.
My name is Dakota Bennett. I am at 601 North Terrace in District One. Like many others here today, and as you will encounter over the next week and a half, I have plenty of thoughts and opinions on what should be done pertaining to the city's finances. Today, however, I'm here as the Vice President of the Historic Wichita Cowtown Incorporated Board of Trustees. Yes, it's a mouthful. I am honored to serve alongside other great trustees, as Mike's on our board as well. Our Old Cowtown Museum is owned and operated by the city these days. HWCI, our abbreviation. Our history goes back to the inception of the museum nearly 75 years ago. Next year is our 75th. Nowadays, we serve in an advisory role to the city, and we own the artifacts. Our mission statement reads as follows: "To foster an entertaining and enriching visitor experience by supporting meaningful educational programs, volunteer organizations, and the acquisition and preservation of historical artifacts." That's why I'm here today. To begin with, I want to thank the council, current sitting, and your predecessors for the much-needed mid-year budget increase last year. This returned pre-pandemic funding enabled us to resume pre-COVID operations and continue to recover from the effects of the last four-plus years. In addition to the Wi-Fi and golf carts that are up and running, we have also seen the beginnings of improvements to maintenance on grounds. Unfortunately, the raccoons are another story, but you can't win them all at once, so we'll keep working on that one. There's also much excitement around our new director, James Quint. We've seen many positive signs over the past five months that point to his strong leadership and promising vision for the museum. As we continue into 2025, we are thankful to have maintained our current budget and thus can continue to improve in these previously mentioned areas and others. Our concern, however, is for the museum's finances as we head into the 2026 fiscal year. It's my understanding that the current proposal calls for increasing our cost recovery from 26 to 28, up by an additional 186, 195, and finally in 28, $205,000. Cowtown's funding is guaranteed by the city and from the general fund, but most of our revenue goes back to the city, the exception being the ways that HWCI, the board, makes money to hold up our end of the deal, such as selling memberships and some merchandise in the gift shop. This results in the city getting roughly 40 cents to the dollar back for every dollar that's budgeted towards the museum. This is the cost recovery as it currently stands. And while I see the logic in increasing this cost recovery expectation, the reality is that that simply is not realistic within our operating current patterns. We are certainly working to improve the cost recovery, and prior to the pandemic, we're making good progress on this goal. However, with only recently, last year, receiving pre-pandemic funding levels, so has the cost recovery only begun to recover. It takes money to make money. If our cost recovery expectation goes up significantly in 2026, this will actually lead to budget cuts as the difference between the actual versus proposed cost demands to be resolved. At a place like Cowtown, 200,000, 150,000 goes a long way. Such a move would prove disastrous for fulfilling our mission. This also sets us up for a downward spiral as the lower-quality visitor experience in turn further hurts income. Risk of loss to some or all operations, loss of staff, loss of accreditations, physical deterioration on the grounds due to lack of maintenance, et cetera. So what does the potential return look like for a rather high-risk move? On paper, it would reduce the deficit by up to 200,000. This is because the city, again, provides stability to funding by guaranteeing the budgeted amount from the general fund. However, most of that remaining 60 cents to the dollar that is not received back to the city by collecting any profit that's made at the museum is made up by the transient guest tax, not the general fund. Every year, we have visitors from all over the country and world, and when they visit, they have to stay somewhere, and many of them stay in hotels and thus pay this tax. If the museum's operations are reduced, or worse yet, the museum is in, as it would be at risk of shutting down, it potentially releases its own downward spiral on the transient guest tax when these guests don't come to our town and stay in our hotels. In summary, we understand you have a particularly difficult task of balancing the budget in the years ahead, but we advise the increasing OCM's cost recovery at this time is a high-risk, low-potential move. The potential being a savings of maybe up to 200,000, and the risk being the loss of one of the largest living history museums in the country. I'll leave you with a recent experience I had. I went on traveling, and I was fortunate to go to Colonial Williamsburg in Virginia, Rockefeller's Playground, where he rebuilt Williamsburg as it appeared during the colonial era, during the 1920s. But since 1976, they have faced significant financial struggles, and unfortunately, it has resulted, I was rather disappointed in how commercialized it had all become, particularly given the high cost of a ticket, $50 there. And it made me realize what a gem we really have, and I can honestly say by my assessment that Old Cowtown Museum offers a higher-quality visitor experience than Colonial Williamsburg. And this is due to our guiding principles of Cowtown's mission statement, which is that we are an educational institution operated as an open-air living history museum dedicated to preserving and presenting the history of Wichita, Kansas, through the immersive experiences of life in the late 1800s. While we must be good stewards of the public's money, we also must do what is best for the public. We must balance fiscal restraint with worthwhile and necessary investment. Many have said it in many ways, but my personal spin is, if we don't know where we've been, I doubt we know where we're going. I have 10 seconds if I can. All of us at the museum are dedicated to preserving our past and educating the present so as to ensure a bright future for Wichita. We are but one piece of the picture, but we are a piece of it, and it is only with all these pieces working together that we begin to see the image we all work hard for unfold before our eyes. Thank you for your consideration. I apologize for going over time.
Thank you. We will continue with public comment.
I'm Stephanie Jaeger, Wichita, Kansas. I also work with Wichita firefighters. I've met with all of you, actually. Respectfully, I would like to provide some context to Mr. Layton's comments. First, he's right, it's not a good night to debate this. It isn't. It's not about alternative facts or how you want to, you know, turn numbers. I encourage each and every one of you to look at your past budgets. I encourage the public to do it, too, because the number of firefighters that we have out there, it's there. If you have hired 100 positions, they aren't firefighters. You haven't increased them. In fact, earlier this year was their not discussion of laying off 41 of them. These positions are not firefighters. They're not the daily staffing numbers. And the firefighters are answering more calls than ever before. They answer your medical calls when you have a heart attack. They answer your fire calls. They rescue your children. They rescue your dogs. We've all seen what they do. There are not 100 new firefighters. That is not true. I've spoken to each of you about the Leveram Report, a program that council spent a million dollars on to tell you that this was a dangerous service. The public has never seen that report. It stays in draft form because it told you, you're running a dangerous fire department. It told you, you are 160 firefighters short of the very basic, basic service. It told you, you are 11 stations short of providing the basic service. Basic, we're talking about here. Again, I encourage you and for the public to start asking for that Leveram Report. Mayor Wu, please, ask for that Leveram Report. We need transparency. The public deserves to know that it is not safe, and we have the ability to do better. I know we do. Everyone on this council, I know, cares about this. I don't know why you're not given the information that you need to make this better, but I know you care. The last thing I'll say, one of the places that you can feel disordered the most is when firefighters are fighting a fire in 108-degree weather, and they're going into a home, 1,000 degrees is how hot it is in that home. They ask for medical support. They get told, no, you can't have medical support standing there with you. No, you can't have that. We can't afford it. Find the money. That's what happens. So when a firefighter goes down because there's not enough firefighters to switch people in and out, there's not enough firefighters for medical support on scene, he then has to wait 10 minutes to be transported to the hospital. And as Ted told you, his coworkers know this is all happening. They saw what happened. They went to the hospital, they told him goodbye. They got back on their trucks, and they answered the same calls in 108-degree weather. I am not upset with this council. I have a good relationship with all of you, and I know you care, every last one of you. Do something, please. I come before you. For the last four years, I've made the same speech. Ask for the Leveram Report. See what's happening in your own districts. Please, before another firefighter or another civilian ends up out here without the help that they need when they need it. We can do better, and I believe in all of you, you can do this. Thank you.
City Manager Layton, can you please address the report?
The Leveram Report that Stephanie's referring to is actually a software program. There were multiple documents prepared as a result of that. It's meant to be a dynamic process, one that we can constantly look at existing conditions and look at needs and look at scenarios for addressing those needs. That's, for instance, that we use that to come to you with the recommendations for the fire stations that are in the CIP. And so, more than happy to share with council all the information that we have that has been developed to this point, and we can, as I said, we'll continue to use that software as we look at scenarios going forward. That's the whole idea. If a council member comes to us and says, I have concerns about response times in my area, it allows us to see what's going on today and what could be done to address that and how we could turn things around if there are true response time issues.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Given that it's a system, if I were to request a meeting to look at the system and look at Leveram Study, is that something that can be done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a reason why it hasn't been shared? I mean, I know it's, she says it's always in draft form, but is there a reason why? I mean, we usually get a presentation on the studies, especially that we spent a million dollars on it. Is there a reason why?
We didn't spend a million dollars on the study. We spent a million dollars on the software to be able to generate the reports that come out of that. It's a point, our reports have been done at a point in time. The first report had certain assumptions in it. The second one used a separate set of assumptions. We can, I have no problem sharing everything that went into it. We brought an outside group in so that we could be a little more performance-based and make sure that what we were doing was based in best practices. And so, the group that has been working on our performance measurement system citywide- And so, the group that has been working on our performance measurement system citywide, first thing they looked at was what was coming out of the Leveram software and helped us analyze that and make appropriate assumptions as we were working forward, so.
I will add one additional thing, City Manager Leighton. While we're looking at that report or the assumptions regarding that software, can you also give us the latest study regarding Wichita Police Department and their staffing levels?
Yes, that's several years old, but more than happy to provide that as well.
Thank you. We'll continue with public comment.
Doug Ballard, District 6. Now's maybe a good time to tie a couple things that I've been thinking about talking to you. Some of you weren't here, but you are all aware, I'll try to tie several little things together based on one little project that we had. You all are familiar with the bridge that we just completed on Amadon. So, I'm interested in a couple things. Water, the environment, infrastructure, I ride a bicycle almost every day. Excuse me. So I want to tell you the water problem that you have is not going away anywhere soon, anyway, soon. So it will go up and down, but it's still going to be there, and we need to address it in so many different ways. So, I think most of you know, at some degree, we are having a problem with climate change, global warming, whatever you want to call it. So, in that bridge, and I'm not suggesting not building that bridge. I looked at it underneath, and even at my expertise, it needed to be replaced. Just to give you an idea, that progress can be measured in so many different ways. That bridge, we all know what it looks like, was 3,500 cubic yards of concrete to complete that project. So, many of you probably know that a yard of concrete, when you have a project, you have to tell them how much concrete you want and when you need it, and you order it in yards of concrete. So a yard of concrete is three foot by three foot by three foot. It weighs 3,900 pounds, and it is responsible for 400 pounds of CO2. So that project alone was responsible, and it's in the manufacturing of the Portland. That project alone is responsible for 28,000 pounds of CO2. And I just Googled mature oak tree. It's a little less than 50. We'll give it 50. So it will take, I'm sorry, let me go back. It is responsible for 1.4 million pounds of CO2 divided by 50 pounds. It will take 28,000 oak trees to cancel that project out in one year. So you can see the price of project can, progress can be measured in so many different ways. So every time we knock something down and then go to put it back up, we're using concrete. It's in the manufacturing of concrete. It's to, when they, to make Portland, they take limestone and they cook the carbon out of it. It's horrible. It's, depending on what you read, it's responsible for between 8 and 9.5% of our global warming gases. The other thing, in the building that bridge, we threw a long process that you guys were all involved in somewhat. We had to open up a temporary fire station, Station Number 23, I think they called, in the parking lot of Tillens. It's about three blocks from the old Number 7, so I guess we paid money to, for somebody to tell us where to put a fire station. So we put it on the other side of the river, then we opened up this temporary station, and it becomes the sixth most, the busiest station in the city. I go, what are we doing? And I think it costs, what, a million dollars to do that? Looks to me like it was a pretty good investment, and maybe we should be putting, while we're trying to figure out how to put all of the stations and hire all of the men, maybe we should be putting some temporary stations in where we can most utilize them. Because all we need is the men and a truck. So, anyway, that's my point. So, anyway, to tie all those things together, so.
We'll continue with public comment.
I'm back. Different billboard tonight. I'm still Nancy Brown. I'm at, I live at 11707 East Crestwood Street, District 2. I'm here tonight as a member of Justice Together. You told us to come when I came. And I'm here regarding the commitment to develop with state and county a blended funding stream for the supportive services for the mid, for the multi-agency center. We don't want it to end up like the water treatment plant where we have this lovely building that nobody knows how to turn on. I'm glad that we were thinking a little bit ahead and got this conversation started. And I'm glad that housing insecurity is a, one of your four top priorities. I didn't see it on the grid anywhere. And I will admit that while I, we found, several of us were going through the budget because, let's face it, it's a monster document. You have my undying respect that presumably you all got through it at least once. But I couldn't find, I, we found where the funding was for the building, but in order to keep the building from just becoming another people warehouse, we have to have the supportive services and the operating expenses and the maintenance and the security services so that we're not just taking people off the street, plunking them in a housing unit and expecting them to succeed, because they won't. We must have the supportive services. They must be funded and ready to go. I get that we won't have it for the winter shelter, but in the spring, when the building is ready to go, we have to have that funding in place, not just for this year, but until we don't need it anymore. That is absolutely vital, otherwise it becomes another failure, and we don't need more failures. And this is, the reason we come, we as Justice Together came to you and the county and the state is that this is a public good. It's not in the public good to have people dying on doorsteps and street corners. The reason, a big reason that our point-in-time count this year is lower than last year is that our homeless deaths quadrupled. It's not that we housed that many more people, we just had more people dying. The supportive services will help that. And I understand that the part of the budgeting for the supportive services is still very much a work in progress and very fluid because they're still working out which services will be in the MAC and what cost offsets will happen with the services there as opposed to at their more remote locations. But we've got to get this done. It's just too important to not happen. It's as important as the fire department, the EMTs, clean water, helping, getting people off the streets and into housing is every bit as important, and maybe more so. And if we can do that, if we can help them get the tools they need to succeed, then they can become successful property owners or occupants, hence adding to the tax base. They can become successful employees, hence paying taxes and buying more stuff, which pays more taxes. So there will be, it's a good long-term investment, and I know in the short, in the short run, it's excruciating. I've looked over the numbers, and I know it's hard, but we've got to do it because there are 690-some identifiable people who need it, and based on my work with Family Promise, I'm guessing that for every one of those people, there's at least another four. I've been told I'm probably being overly charitable with that. It's probably closer to another nine who are in some state of not really having a home, between the couch surfing and the living in the car and moving before the counters get there, or farming out the kids to all the relatives, or staying in a bad relationship. There are a lot of ways to be homeless that don't meet the criteria for the HUD count. So we're probably well over 2,000 homeless people. They all need this to work, and they need you, they need the county, they need the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Councilmember Hoheiser.
Thank you, Nancy, for coming up and really advocating for this issue. It's been on our minds for quite a while. I would like to say, we do have two members of the state legislature with us today. Don't mean to put them on their, but...
Subtle hint.
Well, and I think that they both are very supportive of trying to do what we can in our community. So I would recommend reaching out to them. City Manager, would you like to maybe just talk a bit about possible sources? I know we're working with...
We've had this conversation earlier today.
Yeah, I know we're working with...
Don't get me started on the faith community thing.
Yeah.
You don't want to give me a soapbox on this one. We've been working diligently, as was noted, the council's put $8 million in the construction of the facility, committed on a long-term basis, $500,000 a year, and we're working now with others in the community. I guess where I would differ a little bit is that I don't necessarily think this is just a public sector problem, this is a community problem. And we're trying to get as many community members to come alongside us as possible, public as well as private. And we've started discussions with the private sector to try to get long-term commitments from them as well, with the goal of having this as a sustainable operation. The worst thing to do would be to make this capital investment and then only to be able to use it maybe to half its capacity or make it only a shelter and not have the support services that are necessary. I think we all have the same vision on what it'll take to be successful, but we need more partners.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Nancy, thank you very much. This is a very passionate issue of mine, so I appreciate that.
Mine, too.
We're working on it hard, as City Manager Leighton said. The point-in-time count, I agree with you, it's a lot more than what it is, because it was also, if you, I did it myself, it was raining that day, and so a lot of the homeless probably took shelter. The other thing, to your other point of being in other housing, we interviewed a gentleman at a corner, and he was actually staying in a hotel. He had some income from social security and that paid his hotel. He was just begging for food. So he can't be counted as homeless because he's in a hotel. So, but he really did not have a home. So to your point, it is more than what was stated there. I will tell you, we do have a detailed plan in place now, still being adjusted and finalized with the providers. You may or may not know, I run Guadalupe Clinic. We take care of some of those people, especially the people in congregant, multiple people living in housing. We take care of a lot of those type people. So, it's coming along. I'm more encouraged now than I've ever been. So I think we do have a road. I think City Manager Leighton, Troy, have done a wonderful job. Sally Stang's done a wonderful job of putting this all together, and I think we have a clear vision of where we want to go, what we want to do, and I, we're going to get there. So, so keep pressing. I will ask you one thing, though. Part of the problem is, according to Officer Nate Sweet, I'll have the hot team, there are 66 places to get food in this town. Now, not every day, but at least one day a week or month. 66 places. That, in a sense, enables camping in our city. Somehow, we need to figure out how to redirect those efforts, since those people are all want to do. My church does want to. We have to redirect that effort to the MAC, become part of the MAC, so when people, they want food, they've got to come to the MAC where the services are, where we can get them help, we can get them the help they need, the wraparound services, and get them into housing, get them back to society, and have dignity of work, too. So, thank you for coming. I very much appreciate you bringing my...
And I quite agree. The providers are really hoping to work themselves out of jobs. That's our goal.
Yeah. They never will, but yes, you're right.
And you will see me again.
Yeah, good.
Nancy, thank you so very much. Again, I think it's a quick reminder that you did not see it on the matrix because a community-wide survey did not ask whether homelessness was one of our core services. And so, the top three priorities that you see on the bottom right-hand corner are crime prevention, street maintenance, and economic development. But because of the political will of seven individuals on this council, we made housing insecurity, specifically homelessness in our community, one of the top four priorities. So you can see the commitment from this body right here, working diligently on a multi-agency navigation center so that people can come to one place, have wraparound services, get the opportunity to move on to transitional housing, to permanent housing, and eventually to self-sustaining in our community. So the goal really is for everyone in this community to work together, and the political will of this council has made it one of the top four priorities.
Public comment will continue now.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Ware, 1444 North Perry, North Riverside in District 6. Tonight, honestly, I'm here because of some rumors that I've been hearing, and I'm here to ask you for help doing my job as a state senator. I've been hearing that there's a chance that there is real consideration of dealing with the budget issues by selling off parkland. And that concerns me deeply. I am on the Commerce Committee, and obviously, one of our biggest issues there that we want to promote is economic development. It's one of your top issues as well. I'm also on the Governor's Council for Travel and Tourism. We are, we advise essentially how to market Kansas, and Wichita is my biggest priority, and being the biggest city in the state, you know, that makes sense. So, the last thing I can think of that would be helpful as far as parks are concerned in those, in that regard, would be to lower the number. If anything, we need more parks. We need more lush parks. So, and honestly, that's all that I have to say. Thank you so much, and I appreciate you all.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Senator Ware, you're probably very well aware in your position that rumors are often not true when it comes to public policy as well. In terms of specific words that I used last meeting, I'll read from the minutes. Quote, Councilmember Glasscock stated he would echo enhancement and utilization of our system in terms of benchmarking. And so, how we're using our system, how we're using it better, and making sure it's more efficient as well. So I appreciate you addressing us as well, and glad that you're on a break from Topeka for a while. So, thank you.
I will also chime in on this because, again, I do believe that people should look at our minutes and see how the conversation has come up regarding parks. I believe that right now, we have 144 parks, according to our website, but two additional parks were added about a month ago. So we have 146 parks. I don't believe that quantity equates quality. I believe in having better quality parks. As I heard from a lot of our residents here, you love the parks that we have, and I really appreciate the utilization of parks like Riverside, like College Hill, like McAdams Park. Many parks around our system are well utilized, but we are responsible in having a master plan that will come out next year, a request for... And my question to staff during the last meeting was, that proposal only looked at enhancements and expansion of the park? And I said, we need to also consider all options, including elimination, if we have better quality parks. So again, that was just one perspective from this council, it's mine and mine only. And I did not say I was going to eliminate parks, or eliminate parks plural. I do believe that it's important for us to be responsible with our resources, and when we have 146 parks in our system, we need to know what the quality of all 146 parks are, so we can move forward data-driven in making decisions. So I will ask City Manager Leighton to just address the CIP regarding the master plan.
Thank you Mayor. The Capital Improvement Program has $250,000 for the upgrade of the park plan. There's a draft, RFP, that's been put together, the park board will be reviewing it, and then it will go to the council. It may be that before it goes out, we have a joint meeting of the park board and the council, unless you're all on the same page after you've seen the draft. We're trying to make sure that it, the work that is scoped, will address the issues about utilization, about the system as it currently exists, about funding, opportunities or challenges that may exist. The park director and I agree that the previous planning efforts were done in a vacuum, without looking at the city's financial abilities. And so this one, we want to make sure is built around probably multiple financial scenarios. Looking at our current situation, looking what our historic situation had been from a financial standpoint, and maybe even an optimistic scenario on our finances. If we follow a process like that, and then do a full review of our current park system, I think we're going to go where the council wants, and that is then some discussions about options on what the new park, what the new park system will look like. So I think it could be a pretty robust planning effort. And you'll be getting that probably in the next 30 days.
I will ask one more addition to that request. Can we also have a benchmark comparatively to cities our size and populations of our size regarding parks, so that we have a better understanding of the investments that we, as a city, make in parks versus other communities our size?
I believe we get that on an annual basis, and that will also be part of the work done by the consultant.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Quick question, thank you Mayor. Sometimes I struggle when we hire consultants, is it like a local consultant? Sometimes I struggle hiring people to come in and tell us what we want in Wichita, they don't know Wichita.
The scope of services has a pretty strong public engagement process right now, so a lot of this will be steeped in what the public says they want to see from their park system. But then, in this case, we don't know who we'll select, because we haven't gone out and solicited proposals yet. I do want someone who can tell us what the best practices are, because communities around the country are struggling from a financial standpoint, and most cities are looking at the financial scenarios that we are, right? Knowing that '26, '27, '28 are going to be problematic years. I'd like to know what cities are doing to creatively maintain or enhance their park systems in that environment. And so, if you were to ask me today, I'd be biased towards someone who has a good understanding of national, what's going on nationwide. And usually what happens is you get partnerships between local firms and national firms, and so you get the best of both.
Good, I hope that's the case. I'm sure there's somebody overly qualified here in Wichita that is able to apply for that RFP, so thank you for the information.
Councilmember Glasgow.
Thank you Mayor, I was just quickly looking at the budget page on 285 that goes over the key outcome measures, and we briefly discussed this last time, I don't think I made my point necessarily clear, in that the 2024 target per acre is 2,780 is what our target is. In terms of parks per acre, and a benchmark of what other communities are doing is $4,690 per acre. So how do we increase the quality investment per park, while not taking a budget hit? And so I would be interested in looking at cost recovery models for our park system in terms of renewable development, in terms of solar projects, in terms of how can we utilize maybe just some green space land that aren't being utilized necessarily as a park that people visit every day? But we have plenty of green space, so how can we recover that if we put solar arrays, or if we contract out that land to be able to, to be able to better enhance some of our quality projects while still keeping the green space and recovering our costs as well?
Scope of Services talks about outside funding to assist, to supplement the city's funding.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and I know past councils have asked for this, and I've asked for it during this year as well. When we're doing, and Troy and I have talked about this, when we're doing the new park study, can we make sure that the recreation centers are included in that? There's been some robust discussion before of what is the prioritization of which ones get, you know, repairs and maintenance done to them, and which ones don't? You know, when we talk about parks, we think of the 144 parks and the wonderful green space, but we also have amazing programming that happens within our park and rec department, and amazing facilities. I was just at a friend's wedding a couple months ago, that was at one of our parks, and it was in the recreation center, and it was lovely. So just want to make sure that that's also an emphasis. Thank you.
I will add one more thing to what Councilmember Tuttle said. In that CIP master plan study, looking more at collaborations, Councilmember Johnson and I just came from Boston Park and the rec center there, and they have a collaboration with Go Create to help entrepreneurs have a commercial kitchen, so that they can produce at mass quantities their products. So it's helping with small business owners, business development is economic development. So I see that there are more collaborative efforts, so in that master plan, let's look at also collaborations.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks Mayor. Just one correction, that's Create Campaign.
Well, thank you all so much, and just remember, it's an investment, not an expense. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you Mayor. I nominate Brandon Johnson to be the council title fact-checker over here, so...
We'll continue public comment.
I reside at 2230 North Cardinal Drive here in Wichita, Kansas. I don't know that I have a comment, I think what I have is input, and just some information that to me seems appropriate, given the conversation about budget, and about parks, and about trees, and about maintenance, and how many can we, the cost of achieving maintenance on these, and how much money do we have? So really, with the budget in mind, it's kind of just background information, y'all are provided with a lot of information. I can't even comprehend how hard it is to keep track of all the details about a budget and where the money comes from. But I would say that it does seem appropriate for our pertinent, for our present conversation. The franchise agreement with Evergy, in which we receive 6% of the gross receipts as a franchise fee into our, into our general budget, specifies, this was done in December of 2014, specifies that the city shall put forth a good fourth effort to utilize 1% of the gross receipts towards its tree maintenance program through the City of Wichita Parks and Recreation Forestry and Reforestation Department. To accomplish this good faith effort, the City Forestry Section will commit to the utilization of the 1% of the gross receipts to hiring employees, purchasing, planting, and all maintenance of trees that follow the right tree, right place principles, when the tree location is within a utility easement and/or right-of-way. Should funds from the 1% of gross receipts exceed the commitment referenced above, trees and other maintenance projects for other right-of-way or publicly controlled property under the jurisdiction of park and recreation will be selected as deemed appropriate by the forestry section. Now, I no longer know how much the gross receipts are coming in from Evergy, but 1% I assume is still a very significant amount. Over the years, I've tried to determine exactly how that 1% was being spent, I've never really gotten into the nuts and bolts and the meaty part of it as to what's coming, and how much of this money was additional to the original budgeting items for forestry. But given the fact that we are continuing to talk about the trees, the maintenance, the backlog, this 1% has been, per franchise agreement, directed to the forestry department since December of 2014, so probably beginning in 2015. I just thought it would be interesting information and knowledge for y'all to know where that 1% is going, and how that fits into our backlog of, I forget how many trees it is, or how many years it would take to catch up with the tree maintenance program. So I think that's all I have, unless you all have questions.
We'll continue public comment.
My name's David Bayuth, I live at 719 North Brookfield Street here in Wichita. I came here prepared with a long statement about the issue of closing parks for budgetary reasons. I think a lot of my questions were answered in just the last 10 minutes, I thought it was very good information. I feel a little bit better about it, but I thought I would still come up and just put my two cents in for the need for us to maintain our parks here in Wichita, and not cut back on parks. From what I saw earlier with the, our expenditures on roads, it might make sense for us to close some roads and turn them into parks. Might be a lot, make more sense than where we are now. I know it sounds like a, kind of a joke, but if you look at the amount of money we spend to maintain roads versus parks, it's a sliver. Am I correct? Manager, right? So I mean, we're talking about a resource that's very important to a lot of us here in Wichita. And, I mean, I was sitting on my couch this evening, watching the Olympics, and was hoping to stay there and heard about this and rushed down here. That's how important it is for me. I think it's important to a lot of people in Wichita, and I just think that if you do decide that it's going to become something where you're going to put together a proposal to close parks, it needs to be done in a way that more people can find out about it and chime in on it, and just make sure it's not done with just a tiny portion of Wichita knowing about a park closing, because the impact is huge, especially in the neighborhood of those parks. It affects all types of things, from the utilities and the streets. If you're going to develop that piece, that park into a commercial or residential development, then it changes the entire flavor of that neighborhood, it impacts the values of that neighborhood, it impacts the wildlife in that neighborhood, it impacts so much, and people, especially in the neighborhoods impacted, need to know that in detail before decisions like that are made. So, but anyway, thank you for your time, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We'll continue public comment.
My name's Diana Tedlock, and I am here to get your support for the animal reform in the city, and to not have any budget cuts, or consideration if anything, we need to increase the budget. I don't have all the answers by any means. I do know there is definitely a need for reform. I want, there has not been a whole lot of transparency on what is going on currently. I would like to let everybody know that in the month of July, we killed 32% of the dogs that went into the shelter. In the month of July, we killed 46% of the cats. So we have a problem, and it's just being ignored. And if you want to look at that compared to last year, intakes are not up from last July. In fact, there were 31 less dogs taken in, and the euthanasia rate in July of last year was 9.56%. There was an increase in cats of 84, but last July, the euthanasia rate was 4.28%. So just to show you, there is a need. We need to get back to the root cause, which is obviously spay and neuter. It needs to be accessible at a reasonable cost across the board, not just low income. I'll tell you what my daughter is working on this week, and at the Austin Humane Society, so she has gone out into a fire station, she has gotten six cats, and this is a, I guess, a program that they have for anybody in the city, regardless of income, no questions asked, you bring your cat in. So she took in six cats, she got them spayed and neutered, a rabies shot, a distemper shot, flea and tick meds, all six cats, $162. That's less than one cat here. So maybe we need to increase the budget, and have some vets, that that's all they do, is that they sit here and do spay and neuter program, and not just to low income, because low income's pretty low. It's still a hardship on people that don't meet those requirements. Also, we need to have the right people in the right positions, and that goes all the way from leadership at WOS, KHS, to the vet services, and obviously, we have some problems with the vet services. I have, so we need to make some changes, we need to make some increases, but I have a report here from the Kansas Department of Agriculture, and they went in and did an inspection of WOS on July 11th of this year. And on pages three and four, severity level five. At the time of inspection, at least 12 dogs and seven cats had not received adequate veterinary medical care, as defined in KSA 47-1701, and amendments thereto, that were diseased, ill, injured, or lame, and were not provided with veterinary care as is needed for the health and well-being of the animals. Severity five. So you go to the next page, severity five again. At the time of inspection, I won't read the whole paragraph, but there were multiple animals that had symptoms that were housed with or close to other animals that did not have symptoms, which we all know there's the KDA regulation, that we're having problems with transferring animals out with contagious disease, but that did come up also in the years 2017. And I will tell you that the euthanasia rate, at least on dogs, even though they were enforcing the KDA the same way, was 4.91% back in 2017. So it does not account for all these increases in the euthanasia rate. Also, at the time of inspection, there were four young puppies housed in kennel HM10. All four puppies were huddled in a corner of the kennel that had excessive accumulation of feces, and appeared to be scared and depressed. And this is from our Kansas Department of Agriculture. This was last month. So anyway, improvements need to be made. I send emails out to all of you repeatedly. Mike, I think you've responded, Dalton, you've responded, Maggie, you've responded, nobody else. There is issues. So we need additional programs. The HODA's contract right now, they are no longer under contract with the city, even though it was poorly done. We have not got an answer all year, basically, where the citizens of Wichita are supposed to take an injured animal. We have not got clear, concise. I know there's an RFP out there right now. What are we supposed to do in the interim? I've sent you guys three emails, and a reporter has contacted you, with no response. I've sent you guys three emails, and a reporter has contacted you with no response. It's unacceptable. We need to know. We love our animals. Each one of you has constituents in your districts that care dearly about their animals, yet we're not getting any responses. So then I guess the last thing, I guess I just want to talk on a couple other things. The tree services, I'm going to say, we need to work smarter. I've seen them come out and cut a tree down across the street and had to call them back because there was one that had been on the books for two years. Or if they would have come and cut this tree down and trimmed it, they wouldn't have been out three times picking up the dead. Also, we need to take care of what we have. Also, on the parks, I'm 100% with keeping them. The quality should be good, but again, accessibility is key. So reduction of any perks should be completely off the table because accessibility is the number one priority and key.
Thank you.
And, okay, and take care of what you have. Take care of what you have.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Diana, I just, part of the issue, and you know, has to do with the KDA, the ruling about not moving sick pets to other shelters now. Just, I guess, yesterday or two days ago, I guess, there's an online portal on the KDA website because they're looking at changes to that rule?
Yes, there are.
Okay, so I would recommend reaching out to others who are concerned about this and making sure that their voice is heard.
And they are, they are.
Okay.
They're aware, I mean, yeah. But I appreciate that. Yes, I did see that as well.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue with public comment.
Christina Jackson, 2307 North Enwood Circle. And I'm here today to talk about a possible place where we can look at budget cuts or some to save money. It's a place where the funding increase is 39% starting next year. It's the bicycle and pedestrian budget. Currently, the 2024 is 3.45 million. That's city only money, no state or federal grants that also are in, you know, added. The city's CIP projected 2025 to 2034 budget has 48 million, and that's 4.8 million a year, an increase of over 1 million a year for 10 years. For me, to put it in perspective, the Wichita Bridge repair and rehab for the whole city is $1 million a year. The bike, the 48 million includes 7.6 million for bikeway improvements, plus you also have the Chisholm Creek Park pathway for 1.15, $1,000, $1,150,000. And it does not include the $7 million funding, federal funding that the Red Bud Trail is going to be getting. Another area is art. The Red Bud CIP projected funding for art is $300,000 for the four miles from Woodland to K96. Chisholm Creek Art Pathway is $150,000. And the, I don't know if the multimodal art is included. I thought it was the GEO Fund, $350,000 for the bicycle storage part. West Link Library is getting 130,000 for art, and it's a brand-new building. Evergreen is getting 66,000. The multimodal bicycle scooter storage and EV charging, it's gone up from one point, well, the funding, it's good, I mean, it's good in 1.25 million, and from, that's federal funding from some, I think the Biden Clean Energy Bill is providing 1.25 million. And then the city increased 62,500 to a total of 312,500. And the amendment was approved at a WAMPO meeting, which I know it's kind of different, but three or four city council members are there. It was voted yes, but I didn't see any discussion about it or reasons why it was being increased to 62,000. It just, and it might be, I saw some administrative thing that you don't discuss it if it's under a certain amount, but 62,500 might be something, amount that we kind of maybe question why we're doing this. You know, what amount is it that we start to question? Why are we spending more and more money? With the multimodal storage, it's going to have, just for the bicycle and scooter storage and then the EV, it's going to have clamshell structures individual for each scooter and bicycles of all types. And I'm just wondering if the city's going to charge for that parking and storage. I know they're parking, you know, cars are starting to have to park, pay to park in in-demand locations where this is by Riverfront Stadium, and I'm just wondering if bicycles and scooters will also get charged for this storage? And how long can you store? Days, weeks, hours? I don't know how long something can stay there. I know it was mentioned to me that perhaps we should focus, maybe we could just focus on bike and pedestrian maintenance and safety and not so much of expansion at this time. I know there's the 5 million, I mean, 5 miles a year is hoping to go, and that's pretty much it. I did, just real quick, in the CIP, the Crystal Prairie Park art has $50,000 still in it. I know you said there's nothing, the park is off, but it is in the CIP, just so you know, so I saw that. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Gary, Paul, a combination of you, maybe if, to maybe come and address some of this because we've already talked about this before, but maybe just a... Okay, so that's okay for your preference? We can address it that way? Okay. We'll make sure that you get the information from that request then. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
We'll continue with public comment.
Good evening. Matthew Broderick, 700 North Sagebrush Street. I want to thank all of you guys for sitting, just listening. I know that it is not always that part of the job that you love the most, and you probably don't get that much appreciation for it. I represent the Arts Council and RCB Bank is where I work in the city. I technically live in Minnehaw Township. I am here today just to tell a story. Someone sitting in a seat like yours back probably, I don't know, 15 years ago, maybe 20 years ago, had foresight, was thinking about the future of their community and said, how are we going to get this kid who's never coming back to Wichita to get back here? It's not easy for someone who's said to their family, forget this place, it's a dumpster fire, there's nothing good about it, to change his mind. But you guys, someone said, let's start doing things in the downtown area, let's start investing. They built an exploration place. They've scattered public artwork. They've invested in WHAM and all of the other great cultural institutions and gyms that we have. And in that period of time, there have been studies that show that the arts are a significant industry in this community that are generating economic prosperity and drawing in dollars from out of our city. Tax dollars that come from people who come and want to watch Music Theater of Wichita. They want to go to a show and see some artwork at Harvest or Arts. They want to go to our zoo. These are the things that make our city great. The things that we brag about, the things that we take our kids and our friends who come in from out of town to. And if you cut them, it's going to have a ripple effect, and my kids won't want to come back. I have four kids, and I would love for them to want to come back and live near mom and dad. But if you decide now that you're not going to fund these things that make us a cool city, they're not coming back. They're going to live in Austin or Tulsa or Oklahoma City. I love those cities, but I love Wichita too, and I love the cool arts and culture that we've got going. And I hope that you guys do too, and I think you do. I think you appreciate that sometimes we have to make sacrifices. I know we have to make sacrifices. All of the things that people have said up to this point are super important. Man, I don't want firefighters to lose their jobs. I don't want them to lose their lives. But nobody moves to this city because of the fire department. No one's going to come to this town because of the police department. Every city has those things. Cowtown is unique. It is incredible. Wichita Art Museum is cool. They're getting new artworks and refreshing that place. There's just so much that is incredible about our city, arts and cultural related. I could go on and on. The Aviation Museum, the Historical Society, like I said, there's just, there's a ball of momentum that's happening right now in our city. It's sad that it's happening at a county-run place instead of a city-run place, but I love to see what's happening at Exploration Place, and that's going to bring lots and lots of resources to our community if we do it well and if we continue to fund it. I'm not asking for more. Three months ago, you unanimously said you supported a cultural arts and strategic plan that called for more funding, but I'm not asking for that right now. All I'm asking is, please, please don't take the arts as your easy, low-hanging fruit. Think strategically about what really matters to the people in our community that keep the high-paying jobs in our community so that the text-drawn people and the coke people want to come work here. Those people pay taxes, and they want this stuff. Thanks for your time.
We'll continue with public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's very, I really appreciate the opportunity to start, just that you've had this evening meeting for many of us that work, and it gives us an opportunity to engage, and so thank you for that and thank you for your time this evening. I know it's been long. I didn't really have prepared marks. I really just wanted to come down tonight and, you know, be able to sit in a council meeting. But for those of you that do know me, I am Russell Kennedy. I live at 417 South Mount Carmel here in Wichita. I am the business manager for IBW Local Union 271. One thing that does concern me in all this budgetary conversation tonight, I know we're talking about austerity, but for me, for my members, we need growth, we need opportunities for jobs, and so I am going to beg of you to basically make an investment in this city to continue the good things that we have growing and going in this city. So it provides my members and their families opportunities for work here in this town. So thank you again. I do appreciate it. I know you have tough decisions to make, but I do appreciate that, and we'll hope you'll take that into consideration.
We'll continue public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I live in District 1. My name is Silas Miller. I'm a state representative for District 86 in south-central Wichita. For the sake of time, I'll keep it really short. I know it's already after 9 o'clock. On behalf of my constituents in the south-central Wichita, I'd like to say that when the time comes, please do not close or sell our parks to any of your developer-insider friends. Put solar projects on some rooftops and parking lots. We have plenty of those already. Public green space is sacred, and we need more of it, not less, regardless of profitability or sustainability or however we want to word it.
We'll continue with public comment.
Hello. My name is Brian Jacobs. Many of you have already known me. I live on 334 North Route 10, Wichita, Kansas. I am here to give the Not Cops camp voice. It does not seem like anybody came to have that commentary. I think it's very important to address the fact that most of our system of criminal justice is largely the criminalization of poverty. So a lot of you have spoken in regards to mental health or houselessness or a number of things that ail our city, but none of you are talking about the excess of sanctioned violence, and that is the police state that we live in. So when we're talking about a shortfall, we can find 17 million right off the bat. We had 7 million unanimously given to the police last winter as arbitrary bonuses. I find that to be a waste. And now we're asking for an additional 10 million to give them, what was it, $131 million to the police state as it is. So I would encourage you all to look at the police state, look at the criminal justice system, and find ways to start dismantling that. I know there was nobody else that brought that to the topic here today, but that camp does exist. There are plenty of people that would like to see the defunding of the police and not continuing to bloat those systems. Because the more we criminalize poverty, well, of course, you're going to have a whole bunch more broken people, a bunch more people with mental health issues, and whatever multi-faculty building you build is just going to be a Band-Aid. So we need to stop essentially beating people up and then saying that we actually care about them. Because I do street work, I do anthropology, I go and talk to homeless people all the time. And a lot of the stories that I hear from the cops or even the council are not a full representation of what these people are experiencing. So I'm here to give you that demand that we de-militarize our police, we defund our police, and dismantle our criminal justice systems so that we stop criminalizing poverty as a resolution for public health. Because fines, fees, and incarceration are not going to solve our problems. The more we fine, fee, and incarcerate people, the more broken you're going to make people. You're going to break people, and then you come in there and attempt to save them? They don't need your saving. They actually need to not be harassed because a lot of the cops end up going into low-income neighborhoods and then preying on those people. So you talk about mental health, well, there's a lot that comes in to the economic structure that we have in this country. So if you're not willing to look at anti-capitalist-type policies, if you're not looking at working-class protections, then all you're doing is selling our bodies. You're selling our bodies and using the police to do that. So I encourage you all to really look at the criminal justice system and identify that it is not helping us. It helps some people and generally the ruling class, but it is not helping the average person because not everybody is going to be able to become a business owner or have a big corporation or have all this property. So we need to demarcate the fact that there needs to be a recognition of what these systems are doing to people and not just that they're honorable systems, because they're not. These systems are quite wretched. They are not here for the people. They're here for the profit of private interest. And so until we start addressing the fact that we already know what the capitalist system is, you can't convince us, people that are under that pressure, that it's not a bad system. So my, again, demand is that we de-militarize the police, we defund the police, don't give them an additional $10 million, and you've already wasted 7 million on arbitrary bonuses. So don't waste money on cops is my overall statement here.
We'll continue with public comment.
Well, I guess we started with me. I guess it looks like we're going to end with me. I do have a bet, the chief doesn't know because he hasn't accepted, Chief Sullivan hasn't accepted, that if he doesn't get to their goal, and I don't know what it is, six, the Chung Report, there was 600 officers, that I get a Philly steak if they don't, and he gets some Boston baked beans if they do, so I think I win. So defund the police, I guess, and I'll win a Philly steak, but don't, don't, please don't. So, but anyhow. M A B C D needs some training. They don't need more people, they need training, and they need to realize who their taxpayer, we are their, we are the ones that are paying their salary, the taxpayers. Forestry, I can't ask you for more forestry people, even though they're way behind. You know why? Because he's got like 36, like, say, wrecks, he only can fill 18 of them or something. They can't, they can't get people. They can't get people in forestry. I feel so sorry for the guy. John Bacon is the new guy over there from Gary, and he's doing the best he can with the employees he has. He just can't get qualified people to do what they need in forestry. I feel sorry for him. I'm going to tell you guys something that, you guys need money. You guys need money, okay? I'm not even going to mention anything about parks, so I hope you can appreciate that, but... But six cities our size, all licensed cats, all of them, licensed cats. So if you need income, licensed cats, and I'll guarantee you, you'll get some money in. The other six cities our size are already licensed cats, so are we special? Why are we so different than the other six cities our size? I mean, you guys got a, one day I had the Band-Aids, and Mike had a nice little joke with that, but pull the Band-Aid off. Yeah, people will be upset a little bit, but guess what? You guys need the money? Let's do that. Let's go ahead and license cats. And then up on Central Street, on between, oh, I don't know, Webb Road and 159th, is that District 2, or is that, and they just overlaid that street up there, correct? I don't get it. I drive that street. It wasn't that bad. Why are we wasting our money when these inner streets are just pothole? I ride my bike now. I'm going to get killed. I mean, I know you guys would be happy, but I'm going to get killed. I mean, this is how many potholes are in our streets, and, I mean, her street wasn't that bad, was it? I don't know whether, the county is doing streets that we should be getting together with them and saying, hey, let's do some really bad streets. Why are we overlaying streets that really don't need it? I just don't, that blows my mind. It just blows my mind. City legal, are you going to look into a city employee breaking and trampling on my First Amendment rights? And telling me to get off a city street? Crickets. I figured as much. All right. All right, I'm done. Licensed cats, those. I appreciate it. And the animal shelter, they need, they need equipment, they need training, and they need full-time kennel techs. The training, they get about $91 per employee. The police department gets about $6,667 per employee. Now, they need training. I, don't get me wrong, the police department deserves the training. I'm just saying, animal shelter people, they need the training, and $91 against 667, and the police department is over the animal shelter. So please, please get them more training down there. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just one comment, and Gary can correct me with a head nod, but a protective overlay adds an additional seven years of useful life to a road, right? So that's why we do that.
We'll continue with public comment.
I see none, so I would like to say thank you to the 19 individuals who came and spoke during public comment. I wrote down those notes regarding each one of you. The message was regarding parks, regarding trees, the importance of fire, Cowtown, paratransit, infrastructure, the multi-agency navigation center, parks again, trees, parks, animals, cutting, bikes and pedestrian, budget, arts, growth, parks, defund the police, animals. So I, again, thank you for the comments from the public regarding the budget. We will have one more opportunity for people to speak up about the budget, but I would like to add a couple of words before we bring it, for more council members to speak. I just want to say thank you to everyone in our community who has supported our law enforcement and first responders, firefighters, our EMS workers. I'm really appreciative of the hard work that you do and the sacrifice you and your families make, and so I want you to know that we care, as a council, these individuals who, again, keep our community safe, and that is one of our top priorities as a city of Wichita. It is public safety. So I want to reiterate that the budget currently reflects that. And, again, we are going to make tough decisions, but they will not be without the consultation of community. And so, again, I'm really grateful to all of you who came out during our third evening meeting, and I appreciate Mr. Russell Kennedy for saying that you appreciated having an evening-time meeting. This is something new that this council passed. We have four opportunities for evening council meetings. This is the third of four, and we, again, invite you all to the next council meeting, which is Tuesday at 9:00 AM. And now we have more comments from the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo your comments in regards to first responders, police officers, firefighters, everybody out there. Again, we shouldn't wait for tragedies like what's happened to really express our gratitude and support to them. And, again, every day, they're out there protecting my family, so I really do appreciate everything they do. This is by far the biggest crowd we've had. Budget meetings, evening, for three years I've been up here now, this is by far the biggest crowd. I really appreciate everybody coming out and letting everybody know, all of us up here know further what things you value in our community. The last thing, real quick, we have $32 million in investments. Bob, bear with me here, $32 million in lottery tickets. What's the odds we're going to hit a good one if we do that? Maybe we'll direct staff to come up with that, report those odds, but, again, thank you, everybody, for being out here today and going through this process with us, because that's, like I tell everybody at every meeting, it's not my budget, it's your budget. It's not my city, it's your city. It's our city, so make sure to let your voice heard in the direction that we go.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I know it's late. I'll just make a very few comments. I think I've said this the last few times, we have two, and we do have two more opportunities for community engagement, two more meetings. We actually have the 13th, and then the 20th, when we actually pass the budget, so I want to make sure that people know they can keep coming back to those and communicating with us in the meantime. But, again, just a heartfelt thank you to staff. Thank you for Bob for leading this process. Thank you to Mark and Elizabeth for all you do, but all of your staff and your department that we don't see here in front of us at council, all of the department heads and all of the departments who put their time and energy into finding better ways to do what we do, to be more efficient, to be more effective, and to serve the residents of our community. I've said it every year for the six years that, this is the sixth year I've been on the budget, where you allocate your treasure is a reflection of your values. And so appreciate everybody who participated in the community survey, because that is essentially driving this budget, so thank you for everyone who did that, for participating in the budget simulator, also another tool that helps us to guide this process. But looking forward to the next couple of weeks, and for everyone who came this evening, thank you for those watching online, thank you, and please keep providing your feedback, because it really is heard and it matters.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to echo my colleagues and thank everyone who chose to spend their evening with us on tonight and engage in this discussion, and even for those who did not engage in the discussion, just being here in attendance. As we talk about what we heard tonight, with the exception of one speaker, what I continued to hear was the need and want for investment in our community, and appreciation for the services that we have, and maybe some expansion, and maybe some better efficiencies or increase in services that we provide. With that, we do have two more budget opportunities to talk, but what I'm also hearing is that it's imperative that we actually take in the full revenue-neutral rate to maintain the service levels that we have. While those words weren't said tonight, the programs, public safety, parks, arts, all of that can't operate in the same way if we don't take in the full revenue-neutral rate, which is $12.4 million. That discussion and decision will be, will end on the 20th of this month. I think also, even though we've said it for this year, over the next year, this community has to have a real discussion about the mill levy. That was one of the reports that we just received, and I'll talk more about that after this budget season, but we have to talk about that if we want to continue to maintain service levels where they are, and we heard a lot of the appreciation for that tonight, and even someone pleading not to cut the arts, which tends to be one of the first things governments do cut, but I am hearing the want and need for us to do that. It's not just about tightening belts. We all are doing that, and we have been for quite some time, but this is literally the city that we want to live in. This is literally the city that we want to promote to the country. We have to make those decisions. Sometimes it does cost a little more to maintain those service levels, and that's a discussion we have to continue to have. I'm going to keep saying that every meeting. I'm going to say it next Tuesday. I'm going to say it on the 20th. And over the next year, we have to truly talk about what it looks like to increase our mill levy, to maintain the service levels that we have, to continue to look at what a park master plan would be. That's going to cost real money. And if we want to have that quality of life in this community for our residents, and for those who might be looking to locate to Wichita, then we have to make those investments. It's truly an investment in us. It's not wasted money. It makes our community better, and we're hearing that tonight. We heard that from everyone, and I would even argue, even the one speaker that mentioned cuts, if we weren't in this type of situation, might even want to keep those things as well. So, again, I appreciate everybody being here. I hope we can continue to talk about what it looks like. Revenue neutral is a decision that we have to make on the 20th, and over the next year, we truly have to talk about what it looks like to raise the mill levy.
With that, I will move to receive public comment on the 2025-2026 proposed budget and the 2025-2034 proposed capital improvement program. Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item. 2024 Traffic Improvements and Signalization Program.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Paul Gunswin, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. This evening, I have a presentation on the 2024 Traffic Signal Improvements Program. The adopted 2024 through 2033 Capital Improvement Program includes an ongoing project for traffic safety improvements to signalize major intersections and to improve the traffic signals at existing signalized intersections. The location, the predominant location, or the identified location for 2024 is the I-235 and Cape 42 interchange. There is some private development going on down there. We have been working with KDOT to make improvements to the interchange, including geometric improvements to lengthen some left-turn lanes, phase, right-turn decel lanes, as well as constructing another approach for the private development. As we went through a design, even though it's already signalized, we, the signal poles will be, need to be relocated, and with the age of those and new specifications for wind loading, we need to put in a new traffic signal for that location. The adopted 2024 through 2033 Capital Improvement Program includes $1 million in 2024 for traffic signal improvements and signalization. The funding source is general obligation bond funding, and staff is requesting initiating $1 million at this time. Any additional funding left over from the identified location, we will make improvements to other signalized locations as they are needed. With that, it is recommended that the City Council approve the project, budget, and adopt the resolution, and I will stand for any questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. How much do you estimate would be spent on this one area, and how much, how much savings would you estimate?
I'm not sure we will be opening bids on this project, probably in September, so we'll know more then, but signal prices have gone up quite substantially in the last few years, and we do have to put in some larger bases and different bolt patterns for the poles, so we'll kind of see how that comes in. But we'll identify the money for the project so we are able to open bids on the project, and then we'll see whatever savings we have left from that.
Thank you.
I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench.
All right, I'll go ahead and make the motion to recommend that the City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Real-time Information Center Design Installation and Support Services Contract.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Good to see you all. Today, I am looking for your approval to proceed ahead with our grant-funded Real-Time Information Center. So as most of you know, we are basically looking at consolidating all of our technology to make police operations much more effective and much more efficient, much like the city manager mentioned a little bit earlier on today. That is basically bringing all technology and obviously looking at new technology as well. So Phase 1 is to create a physical space for the Real-Time Information Center. We have identified the fifth floor of the city building, and we will look at reconfiguring the media room and adjoining offices, which will create the Real-Time Information Center. A request for bids was issued for the design and configuration, including pretty much everything, so it would be a turnkey operation. Constant Technologies was chosen as the vendor through the city's RFP process. The contract for all services and hardware through Constant Technologies was $826,276.20. The two grants that we got would fully pay for everything. There was no local match required, and an annual service level agreement would not exceed $18,000 a year. So I threw on some pictures of what it would look like, so you guys have a better idea. This is what Constant Technologies put together, and this is what it would look like on the fifth floor, including our ComStat room as well. So with that, I will take any questions.
Questions for staff? I will ask one question. Okay, Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I always come up with one, so. Do we have any estimates on ongoing costs, what it will cost to actually man the Real-Time Information Center?
We do. We were looking, approximately about $300,000 a year would be roughly around everything.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to know if you can share how many public comments you've already had regarding the Arctic, and, again, there was a lot of opportunity for community to speak.
Absolutely. We've been doing, I think we're on our fourth, I think we have one more left for our District Advisory Board meetings. We've put all the presentations online, and we have got incredible feedback and lots of positive support for everything that we've, we've been very transparent about what it is, what it's not, what we're looking to do, and how we're trying to improve public safety for our community. And, like I said, every, every area that we've been through so far, we've got very positive feedback.
Thank you. I see no further questions for staff. We'll open it up for public comment. I see no comments. We'll bring it back to the bench.
Madam Mayor, with a motion to approve the item as presented by the Wichita Police Department.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
PUD 2024-7. Zone change request in the city from GC General Commercial to PUD Planned Unit Development to permit use of the site of outdoor display sale but allow a gravel surface and adjust screening requirements located on the north side of West Kellogg Drive within one-half mile west of South 135th Street West.
Good evening. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department, here to present this item. So this is an item that you've seen before. In this case, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property, as you heard from GC General Commercial to Plan Unit Development, which is custom zoning. This item is being heard tonight because, one, protests have been received against the application, and, two, because this item was sent back to the Planning Commission for additional review. In terms of the request, the applicant has received notices for violations of the Unified Zoning Code on this property. The applicant has indicated that they are requesting the rezoning in order to, one, come into compliance with the zoning code, and, two, so that they can develop the northern portion of the property for self-storage. The version of the planned unit development zoning before you today is modified from what was presented. was presented at the City Council in June. This is because the applicant revised the language of the PUD based on feedback from the DAB and from neighbors to the north of the subject site. It also is coming to you with a different Planning Commission recommendation. In terms of the property, the site, as you can see here, is located north and west of the intersection of Kellogg and 135th Street. It consists of two properties, is approximately 11.94 acres in size, Joan G, G C, General Commercial, and developed with an office and sales facility. The property is currently in use for a shipping container sales business. In terms of context, properties to the north are zoned SF5 residential and are developed with single-family dwellings. Property to the south, across Kellogg, is zoned G C and currently undeveloped. Property to the east is zoned G C and in use is open space for the Auburn Hills subdivision. Directly to the west of the subject site is an unimproved, is unimproved right-of-way. Property to the west is zoned G C and undeveloped. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about screening and paving. In addition, the staff report provides information, oh, in addition, apologies. Attached to the staff report is a text for the Custom Zoning District. Here are some highlights of changes to that language since your meeting in June. It now includes prohibition on stacking of materials taller than 20 feet. It also prohibits stacking of materials within 25 feet of the north property line of parcel one of the PUD, and within 50 feet of the north property line of parcel two in the PUD. In addition, it also specifies hours of business operation and outdoor activity. In terms of review, on May 9th, the Planning Commission originally considered this item and recommended denial. That vote was seven to five. Seven members of the public spoke in opposition at that meeting with a variety of issues, including devaluation of residential property runoff into the Kouskin Creek, increase in noise, visual character of the surrounding neighborhood. On May 8th, the District Advisory Board recommended denial. That vote was four to three. No members of the spoke, no members of the public spoke on this item at that meeting. On June 11th, the City Council heard the case as a non-consent item and sent it back to the MAPC for additional review. That was on June 11th. On July 11th, the Planning Commission heard the case again with revisions to the PUD and recommended approval. The vote this time was 11 to one. No members of the public spoke at that hearing. The protest, as you'll see in just a moment, remains the same as what you saw earlier, with 7.3% of the protest area represented, so it's under the 20% threshold. The action, recommended action then, is that it's recommended the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the requested zone change. It requires just a simple majority, again, because the protest was below 20%, and because the MAPC is now recommending approval. Alternatives include the following. As always, you can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and deny the zone change request. That would require five of seven, because it is an override. And just a quick note about the process that public comments are taken at the Planning Commission meeting. With that, I'll just take you through some of the graphics real quick. So, here's the map of the site. Here's the zoning map, showing the zoning that was described earlier. The map from the comp plan, showing new employment recommended. Here's the map from the PUD. Here's the protest map, again, showing the 7.3%, and photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. Councilmember Glasscock.
Mayor, thank you so much. I just wanna say, thank you for your work on this. I like to see one from seven to five at MAPC to 11 to one. So, I think this shows when neighbors, businesses, and also the community work together, we can come up with a better solution. So, thank you for that. With that, I would move that we adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Z O N 2024-28. Zone change requests in the city from SF5, Single Family Residential District, to TF3, Two-Family Residential District, generally located within two blocks south of West Central Avenue and within two blocks west of Northwest Street.
Hello again. Scott Wadel for the record. In this case, as you heard, the applicant's requesting to rezone the property from SF5 to TF3. This item is being heard today because the District Advisory Board and the Planning Commission recommendations, they're both for approval, but the District Advisory Board recommended a condition that the Planning Commission did not. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they're requesting the zone change, so they can build a duplex on the property. Please note that the applicant is also applying for a lot split to divide the property into two parcels. This would allow for up to two duplexes, so four total dwelling units to be built on the subject site for this zoning case. In terms of the property, the site is generally located south and west of Central and West Street. It consists of, currently consists of one parcel, is approximately 0.29 acres in size, zoned SF5 and developed with a single-family house and a detached shed. In terms of context, properties to the north, southeast, and west are zoned SF5 and developed with single-family dwellings. Property to the northeast, and I'll show you this on the zoning map, is zoned TF3, split into multiple properties with a duplex on each. Within one block south of the subject site, there's a large contiguous area of TF3 zoning, developed with a mixture of single-family and duplex dwellings as well. In terms of review, on June 27th, the Planning Commission reviewed the, had the public hearing and recommended approval of the zone change request, and that was unanimous, 13 to zero. There were no public comments at that hearing. On July 8th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended approval per the staff recommendations, but with a protective overlay. No members of the public spoke about the case at that meeting. The recommended PO included the condition that the duplex shall be designed and constructed with a hip or gabled roof, which is similar to other cases in District 6. No protests were received against the case, therefore, the zone change can be approved by a simple majority of four of seven votes. And in terms of the recommendations, recommend the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested zone change, authorize necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval. Again, requires four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the Planning Commission, adopt alternative findings, and approve the zone change with a protective overlay, as recommended by the DAB. That would require five of seven votes, because it's an override. You can override the MAPC, and you can deny this application. Or, as always, you can return the case to MAPC for additional consideration. As always, just a quick note about the public hearing occurs at the Planning Commission, per the City Council policy. Take you through the maps and graphics here. So, here's the zoning map that you saw earlier. Here's the map from the comp plan, showing new employment and residential recommended for this area. Here's a graphic that was submitted as part of the application, indicating the proposed lot split. Here's photos of the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
My apologies. Are there any questions for staff? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to override the MAPC, approve the zone change request per the DAB recommendation with a protective overlay recommended by the DAB, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of the second reading. In support of this motion, I offer the following findings. The additional land use restrictions in the DAB recommendation protective overlay will help reduce potential negative impacts to nearby properties.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Z O N 2024-29. Zone change requests in the city from G O, General Office, to N R, Neighborhood Retail, with an amendment to Protective Overlay Number 270 to permit a market, cafe, and personal care services, generally located on the south side of East 34th Street North, one-quarter mile east of Northwood Lawn.
Hello again. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department for the record. As you heard, in this case, the applicant is requesting his own change from G O, General Office, to N R, Neighborhood Retail. And the second part of this application is to amend the protective overlay that already exists over the site, and that amendment would permit additional uses and clarify details related to lighting, screening, and noise levels at the property. This item is being heard today because the protests were received against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they're requesting the zone change so that they can build a retail center on the property with the option to include a market, a cafe, personal care services, and offices. About the property, well, the site is generally located, as you can see here, north, directly north of K-96 and east of Woodlawn. The subject site is a portion of a larger property, which you can see on this aerial. It is, the subject site is approximately just under an acre in size. It is zoned, as you heard, G O, General Office, and is currently undeveloped. In terms of context, properties to the north are zoned SF5, Single Family, and developed with single-family dwellings. Immediately to the south is K-96. Properties to the east and west are zoned G O and owned by the applicant and currently undeveloped. In terms of review, on June 27th, the Planning Commission had a public hearing for this item and recommended approval. That vote was nine to four. Four members of the public spoke in opposition to the requested zone change with concerns for an anticipated increase in traffic and speeding as a result of the development. On July 1st, the District Advisory Board heard this item, and they had no recommendation for the zone change at that time. Multiple members of the public spoke at that meeting in opposition with concerns similarly stated at the Planning Commission meeting. Multiple members of the DAB inquired about the total number of protests received for the case. That information was not available because the protest period had not concluded, and so the DAB members requested that it would be, come back to them prior to the City Council consideration, and I'll get to that in just a moment. 14 protests were received against the application. Three of those protest petitions were within the protest area and amounted to 24.19% of the protest area. That exceeds the 20% threshold, and therefore requires a supermajority of six of seven votes to approve any zone change. So, on August 5th, so Monday night, the DAB received an update on this case with the protest information. The DAB voted to approve, to recommend approval, subject to the staff recommendations, and that vote was eight to one. Six people spoke in opposition and requested zone change at that meeting with concerns related to encroachment of commercial development into the neighborhood, and the increase of traffic and littering, and nearby vacant retail spaces, alternative options for the applicant. In terms of the recommendation, it is recommended City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the requested zone change and amended protective overlay, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. Again, because of the protests, this would require six of seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and deny the requested changes, or, two, as always, you can return this case to the MAPC for additional consideration, and that would require a simple majority vote. Again, just a note about the process, and that the public hearing for this item occurs at the Planning Commission, per City Council policy. Take you through the maps and graphics. So, here's the aerial, as you can see. Here's the zoning map, shows the residential to the north and the surrounding zoning. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan, showing a mix of both residential and employment recommended for the area. Here is an illustration that I think was included as part of the application. Here is the protest map that shows where the protests were located, again, amounting to over 20% for the protest area. Here's photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. What all is allowed under G O, General Office?
Well, in, in general, I think, I don't know all the specifics right offhand, but in general, it's, it's limited to office. It does not allow for the commercial uses and the personal care services, which is what they're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
That was my question.
I see no further questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. There was a really good conversation on Monday night regarding this case, and representatives from, the applicant were there to talk with community about that. I think the concerns of traffic were legitimate, but that's something that we've been talking about for some time, and working on that a little bit with WPD. Being that the property is already zoned G O, they could build much of what was kinda talked about from community, aside from the uses. They could build offices there, which would also add to some of the concerns. So, listening to the conversation, some of the legitimate concerns about the landscape buffers were brought up, and did not seem to be an issue with addressing that. So, from the discussion that we had, and having them come out, and the DAB's support of that, I had come up with a different motion to make to support this. So, I would move that the City Council override the MAPC, approve the zone change and amendment to Protective Overlay Number 270 with the following alternative conditions that I'll get to in a minute. Place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. Protective Overlay Number 270 shall be approved with the recommended language per the MAPC recommendation, in addition to the following changes to condition number five. Landscape buffers and parking lot screening shall be in accordance with the City of Wichita's Landscape Ordinance, provided that parking lot screening shall be accomplished with a landscape berm that shall be no less than three feet tall. That berm shall be installed prior to receiving occupancy permits. Items A and B under condition number five will remain unchanged. And in support of this motion, I offer the following. The requirement for a specific type of parking lot screening is not significantly more restrictive than what is required by the landscape, Landscape Ordinance. The requirement of a landscaped berm versus the use of only shrubs or bushes will help mitigate the headlight trespass toward the houses across the street immediately, as opposed to waiting for vegetation to reach three foot in height at maturity.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Scott. We have an audience member. We don't have any public comment regarding these items. There's no public comment moving forward, sir. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Glasscock to attend the Community Leaders of America's Forum for Community Leaders in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, September 25th through 27th, 2024.
I will motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes five with one nay and one abstention. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Mayor Wu to attend the Community Leaders of America's Forum for Community Leaders in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, September 26th, 2024.
I move to approve the travel.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes five with one no and one abstention. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll begin with appointments. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Mary Dean to the, just one second, Wichita Cedric County Community Action Partnership Board.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to appoint Kalen Jackson as the District One Advisory Board Youth Member.
I motion to approve those appointments. Second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six zero.
Councilmember Johnston, could you cast your hand?
Motion passes seven zero. It is now time for Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Since DAB 1 goes to midnight quite frequently, I just figured we should just stay here until midnight. Councilmember Hoheisel wants to.
Councilmember Hoheisel had 9:30 on the estimate. I think 10 o'clock is like Price is Right rules. You go over, it doesn't count, Becky.
I had 10. So sing, Brandon, sing.
I will have a couple of comments. I would just like to invite the community to come out tomorrow for firefighter, both funeral services, which will be held at Park City Arena at 10 a.m. There is a public viewing at 9 a.m., and we hope that the family knows, and family and friends of firefighter both know that we are supportive of them and send our condolences and our community. Again, thank you for lowering your flags to half-staff, as well as some of the buildings that have turned red in honor of firefighter both. So again, those are some comments. And last but not least, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who stayed to the very end of the meeting. Again, council meetings allow public comment on specific agenda items, and we appreciate when people come and are civically engaged and give their comments. But you can always email all council members. Our emails are available on our website, wichita.gov, and you can find, again, all of our contact information. Thank you all very much. I motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six to one. One nay. Have a good night. Thank you, staff, for staying this late. Appreciate it.